I'd like to call this meeting to order. Thank you, everyone, for being here. It is Thursday, November 19th. In an effort to conduct board business, the school board has scheduled two meetings a month at this rate, and this is what this meeting is. This is the second meeting of the month for the Burlington School Board. Thank you, everyone, for being here. For those who want to participate, we're going to stand and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance, the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. We do not have a consent agenda tonight, so will someone give me a motion to approve the agenda as said?
Are we amending it, though?
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda at the request of the chair. I'll add an item called "Update on the Superintendent Search," and we'll put that in after item number seven, District Priorities. So Bonnie, renumber however you'd like on that. That's where we'll stick it.
Thank you, Commissioner Wick. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Curry. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor of adding item seven B or eight?
Yeah, adopting the amendment as amended. The agenda as amended.
Adopting the agenda as amended. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Well, thank you. The motion carries. So do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? We already did it. Thank you. Next on the agenda is public comment. We ask that the public have the opportunity to speak. We'd like to keep it within two to three minutes. And with that, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven members of the public are here. We'll begin with Sarah Wright. Welcome, Sarah. We'll come up to the microphone on the table. Yep.
Thank you. My folks, my name is Sarah Wright, and I teach Spanish at Hunt and Edmunds Middle School. You she/her pronouns. And I'm just going to speak briefly. Nope, I'm just going to lean down about the language programs. So first, a really quick recent history, starting with school year '08 through '11. At that time, we had elementary through high school Spanish. And then '11 through '13, we were unable to continue that program. And then '13 through '14, we had two and a half teachers at each middle school teaching Spanish and French. And then '14 through '15, we had two. '15, '16 was the last year that the middle schools offered full French and Spanish programs. And then '2016 through current year, we've had one Spanish teacher and one French teacher shared between the middle schools in a variety of configurations. So, for example, last year, I was teaching semester at each school. And then I said to my students, "Oh, I will see you next year." But then the model changed again, where this year it's a full-year model, and so I didn't return to those students. And that was really difficult for the relationships that I had with them. And I guess to give you sort of analogy of what that might be like is if this were a music program, and I was saying to the student like, "Hey, you know, you did a great job with trumpet last year, but unfortunately, the trumpet teacher is now going to go to a different school, but it's okay. You can just play cello." And so that's sort of the way the languages have been. Some students have either switched back and forth, or only had the opportunity to do one language for one semester in their middle school. So what does a good language program need? We just need consistency so that students can take the same language every day for two years and give them a really good start-up. It doesn't really matter -- well, obviously, I like Spanish, and that's my passion, so personally, I care about Spanish. But professionally, it doesn't matter what language you have. It could be Chinese, it could be Arabic. The most important thing for brain development is that the students have an early start in languages, and then after a couple of years, their brain is sort of set up with what it's like to learn languages. And sort of when they go to the high school or in college, they could switch to another language, and that early learning would benefit them. This happened to me when I was a young person. My middle school only had French, and my really wise guidance counselor said to me, "Well, you should go ahead and take that French, because if you really do love Spanish, it's going to make learning Spanish easier for you." And here I am, Spanish teacher, so it worked out well. So just to summarize, to create a consistent program means ending the sharing of language teachers between the two middle schools. This has been really detrimental to language learning and relationship building. If you want to offer students more than one language, you will need more staff. But you currently have enough staff to offer one language in each middle school. The current contracts are one Spanish and one French, so if you wanted to have the middle schools each have a different language, you could. Or you could change that and have both middle schools have the same language, but only one language with your current staffing. But if you want more, then you will need more staff. So I'm mostly making a plea for to return to a consistent language program, and I really thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Sarah. Next is Claire McQueen. Welcome, Claire.
Thank you. Hi, thank you all for having me here tonight and for all you do for the school district. My name is Claire McQueen, she/her pronouns. I'm a 21-year-old environmental studies student at the University of Vermont. I moved in 2012 and did all four years of high school here at BHS. My sister is actually a current junior here. One thing I remember from my time here is the fact that military recruiters would sit up in this very room during our lunch block. It's something I never really thought twice about because it's so normalized in our society. But reflecting on that now, especially with recent news stories about military recruitment, I wanted to bring my thoughts on recruiters on this campus to the board's attention and hopefully open more of a discussion around it. Keeping in mind, this is an especially vulnerable time in a young person's life as they choose colleges and plan for their futures as part of the curriculum. Military recruitment does not present the realities of enlistment. It instead advertised itself as an opportunity for free college tuition and a fast track into a career path equipped with military recruiters who need to get a certain number of recruits to meet their quotas. The military has actually recently been struggling to meet their enlistment goals as the unemployment rate falls. According to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, it's currently at 3.6 percent, and according to Admiral William Moran, Vice Chief of Naval Operations, trouble looms for recruitment when it's below 4.1 percent. This leads to more efforts in the Advertising and Public Relations Department of the military. The Wall Street Journal, New York Times, and other publications describe new uniforms solely for recruiters and new tactics directed at specific minority groups to get them to I've actually spoken with the Green Mountain Chapter's President of Veterans for Peace, who informed me there was at one point a counter-recruitment program at some schools in Vermont where volunteers gave a more holistic depiction of enlistment, service and life after service beside military tabling. According to a participant in these programs, Veterans for Peace has been to several Vermont schools, either invited by students or by faculty members. There, they would provide literature and information, often working with students for assignments, or as actually like guest speakers in class. I thought this would be beneficial in providing information about future job prospects to high school students. And I do want to add that I'm not anti-military or anti-recruitment. I just, I have a lot of respect for those who choose to serve our country, and actually personally interviewed two members of the National Guard researching this, so I could hear both sides of this argument. I do fully believe, though, that it should be a fully informed choice, and I take issue with the fact that the recruiters are present in high schools during the day in an unavoidable kind of way. Ideally, all sides would be given time to speak in a more discussion-based way in a classroom. When I was a senior here, everything was about like college, how to take out loans for, how to apply for it. And I do get the need for this, but building post-high school plans into the curriculum sort of alienates those who cannot attend college for a multitude of reasons. And recruiters know this, which is why the military presence in high schools is so important for their recruitment quotas and inevitably affects individuals or families of a lower socioeconomic class in an inequitable way. I don't want to take away access to these individuals or families' opportunities, but I want to stress that it should be a fully informed choice. If someone is disadvantaged in society, they should not have to risk their life and health for the same opportunities as others. I do have a few questions to finish with. During my time at the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee meeting, I was told there used to be a policy of no recruitment at BHS, but that was recently changed. According to military officials, there are over 1,100 U.S. high schools that do not allow military recruitment on their campuses. And what are BHS's policies and why? And thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Claire. Next is Maddie and Casey. So it's Maddie Wood Lewis and Casey Brewer. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Madeline Wood Lewis, and this is my friend Casey Brewer. You all heard from me via email, and as you can probably guess, we're here to talk about the BHS start time. We both understand that with everything going on in the Burlington School District, this may not be the number-one priority. We did do some research and talked to some of our peers about the subject, and we still think it's really important to bring it to light. Thank you for inviting us to speak and for giving us your time.
School Centers for Disease Control and Prevention have found that early start times not only interfere with teen sleep schedules, it can also cause more serious health risks, saying not getting enough sleep is common among high school students and is associated with several health risks, including being overweight, drinking alcohol, smoking tobacco, and using drugs, as well as par-academic performance.
According to a 2006 National Sleep Foundation poll, the organization's most recent study of teen sleep, more than 87 percent of high school students in the United States get far less than the recommended eight to 10 hours, and the amount of time that they sleep is decreasing. That means that out of the 1,005 students that attend Burlington High School, about 874 of them suffer from lack of sleep and have a higher susceptibility to said health risks.
As you probably know, South Burlington starts at 8:40 a.m. on a normal school day, allowing for more sleep and a more productive day. On the Friday late start, they begin at 10:30.
We are proposing that BHS moves back its start time. The American Academy of Pediatrics urges middle and high schools to aim for a start time that allows students to receive eight and a half to nine and a half hours of sleep a night. In most cases, this will mean a school start time of 8:30 a.m. or later.
Again, thank you for listening. We both hope that you let this percolate in the backs of your minds as you decide what issues to focus on in the district moving forward.
Thank you very much. Next is Betsy Nolan. Hi, welcome, Betsy.
Good afternoon, good evening. Hi, my name is Betsy Nolan. I am a music teacher at Edmunds Elementary School, and I am here tonight representing the Burlington Education Association. So I just wanted to talk with you briefly about the statewide negotiations that are happening around teacher health care and ask the board of the Burlington Schools to advocate for a plan that is fair and affordable, particularly for our most vulnerable employees who, in some cases, it could, we could move to them paying almost 90 percent of the money that they earn toward health care for them and their families. Since we moved to the high deductible plan a couple of years ago, it has been really, really challenging. I can say for myself, in the first year, I spent over 25 hours working on trying to reconcile my health care costs. I still am owed money from the big data path debacle. When I started teaching, I knew I was never going to be like super rich, and I was totally good with that, and I really thought that I would not have to worry about health care. And that just hasn't been the reality. I'm generally a healthy person, but every time I go to the doctor, it is incredibly stressful because I get a bill, I try to find out if it's been paid. I can't find out if it's been paid. I get sent to numerous different places, and I'm a single person who's generally healthy. So just to make it really clear that if this is my experience for people that are trying to navigate this system, for families or for people who have long-term health issues, it really is quite upsetting. And then to hear rhetoric from the School Boards Association about teachers needing to have skin in the game when it comes to our health care is really, it's really disheartening. And I know that everyone has struggles with health care and that our health care system as a country is broken. And I also know that teachers wipe noses and expose themselves to more germs than your average person on the street. We also are in a profession where if we need to take a day off because we're sick, we have to work to write plans, and we have to like negotiate whether or not, like, is it worth it for me to stay home today when I'm sick because I know the sub isn't going to be able to implement my curriculum adequately today? And so the whole idea that we don't have skin in the game if we're not being asked to navigate a super-complex system, or if we're being asked to pay, you know, an exorbitant amount, especially for younger teachers and for our paraeducators, it just, you know, I really hope that our school board will advocate to their association on the behalf of the teachers and the paraeducators in the Burlington School System. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Valerie Wood Lewis. Welcome, Valerie.
Hello, I'm Valerie Wood Lewis. I was a teacher in the district, and now I'm a sub and a parent. And I just wanted to thank you for your support of alternative programs like the Burlington City and Lake and also Horizons. I have a student at Horizons, and it is just magical. From the minute you walk through the door, you get a motion. Those teachers know and value every kid in that building. The community spirit is palpable when you walk in the door. The kids are doing, they are exemplifying exactly what you stand for around flexible pathways, engagement with learning, building community. It's a really special place, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And next is Dan Cunningham. Hi, welcome, Dan.
My name is Dan Cunningham. I'm a parent in the district. Most people arrive at these meetings with budget requests, and I arrived here tonight with a source of funds. Kind of like Santa Claus in November. We're spending a quarter to a half a million dollars in the district in direct expense for proficiency-based learning. Note that this is not the same thing as project-based learning or flexible pathways. This budget could be zeroed and deployed to other educational initiatives teachers support. There are three critical points you need to understand as a board member. One is proficiency-based grading in Vermont is not a requirement. The Secretary of Education stated that clearly last week on WCAS. Proficiency-based learning is mentioned only in a regulation, but there is no definition. Burlington School District could have changed nothing, spent nothing, and been in 100 percent compliance with that regulation. Two is the New York Times Magazine citing insiders at Trinity College ran a story last month which pointed out that the lack of a clear traditional transcript is inequitable to poorer children. Why? In such a case, universities proceed to place more emphasis on the SAT, and the SAT can be influenced 30 percent of the time by expensive test prep. The most equitable approach for all students is to respect the national standard. And finally, on an immediate local level, I believe that proficiency-based learning, the proficiency-based learning experiment is backfiring. As teachers are instructed to lower weightings on homework and projects, even more emphasis is being placed on summative tests. This makes the school experience more test-dominant, not less. In some cases, a handful of tests are making up most of the weight of the grade of an entire course. The teacher formally had the flexibility to adjust as needed. I'm asking you to zero the quarter to half a million dollars in the proficiency-based learning budget and reallocate the money in ways that support teachers making their own decisions in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There's no one else signed up on the list. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak at this time that didn't get a chance to sign up? All right, thank you. Seeing none, we'll move to board reflections. At this time, any board member would like to reflect on public comment? Commissioner Curry.
Thanks. I just had a comment about the last meeting, November 12th. I had a conversation with a member of the Hunt community, and it came to my attention that my language for the amendment was misunderstood. And so I just wanted to take this time on record to state that the amendment was not intended to require Hunt or any other school to fly the Black Lives Matter flag, but it was a language that was intended to provide the opportunity should they choose it. So I promised the community I would make that statement on the record.
Thank you, Commissioner Curry. Noted. Commissioner Avančik.
I just wanted to thank Claire McQueen for coming and talking about military recruitment at the high school. I think it's an important subject for our community to discuss. I think it disproportionately affects students of low income, and they're not given the whole picture. So military recruitment involves combat, so these students could end up in a war, could end up dead, or perhaps even worse yet, could end up with a severe mental illness. And so I think we need to give them the entire picture, and perhaps if people don't agree with getting rid of military recruitment at BHS, to provide Veterans for Peace to come and give us some counter-recruitment. And then I also wanted to thank Maddie and Casey for coming to talk to us about delaying the start of high school. This research has been out for years, and our district has not done anything about it. And so I would be a proponent of an 8:30 or later start time at our middle schools and our high school, because I do think that our children need their sleep, and it's important for learning. And I'm willing to help get that started.
Thank you, Commissioner Avančik. Commissioner Sowers.
Thank you to everyone who spoke tonight. I'd also like to echo a little bit of what Monica said too about for the late start times. Your letter was perfect timing because a couple of weeks earlier, I had done some research on late start times at South Burlington, and I would like to, it was some initiative that I feel passionate about as well, because the research is there, that this is the best thing for our students. And so I'm excited to move forward and do more research. I've been in touch already with South Burlington to see what they've learned and to work with you lovely ladies as well as student reps for them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Goulik.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm always impressed with the young people, the students we have who come and speak to us. I really appreciate you coming tonight. I'm a big fan of the late start. I think it's a great idea. I wanted to speak a little bit about what Claire said this evening, and I appreciate her words. But I have had this conversation with Monica. I'm a little bit conflicted about this one, only because from my personal experience, my father grew up very poor in Nashua, New Hampshire, and he never got to go to college. And he left his home the day after he graduated from high school and joined the military, and he served in the Air Force for 22 years. And I can say that the military gave him opportunities he wouldn't have otherwise had. He was in both Korea and Vietnam, and he got to travel around the world with the atomic clock. I don't know where he found out about the opportunity to serve, but it may have been a recruiter in his high school, I don't know. But I do think it is something, especially for some of our vulnerable populations, it's, it presents an opportunity. So as much as, you know, I hear what you're saying and I'm conflicted, I do think there are two sides to this story as well.
Commissioner Wick.
Thank you, Chair Wool, and thanks to everyone who spoke tonight. I found it incredibly helpful and enlightening. I would like to say thanks, especially as well, to Sarah Wright, the Spanish teacher. I have had children in the Burlington Schools during the entire time that she sort of recapped the decline of our global language here in Burlington, and I think it's a great shame. And I think actually one of the reasons I ran for school board, which I haven't yet fulfilled yet, is the idea that we ought to consider bringing it back to at least where it was, if not better. And I know there are different ways of doing it, but I would very much be in favor of taking that up. In the future, we've been so busy, as you know, the last year or two, but I think it's time, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wick. Anyone else? Thank you. Moving on to the agenda, item number four, good news. Superintendent O'Bang.
Excellent. Thank you. I thank everyone who's here tonight. I'm really excited to share this good news with you. For the last few years, we've been kind of strategizing and looking at ways to share some of the wonderful things that are happening in Burlington School District. You know, often we have come to board meetings, we're solving problems, so we're dealing with challenges. But as you know, we have some amazing students and staff and parents who've contributed to the success of our district. And so one of the strategies we came up with was a video series in terms of highlighting programs, and we're able to have our first sort of video, which is sort of the trailer, I guess you could say. And then the plan is to have a series of videos on the different programs. So someone mentioned tonight, Horizons is on top. I'd love to have a video just highlighting that aviation program at BTC, even languages. For those who are out there, we're actually having a language meeting in December around how we do language in Burlington, and hopefully it's arranged from just core classes to dual-language programs. So hopefully that comes. So this initial video is just the beginning, and then hopefully you will see some more series of different programming. And I want to thank RTN, our partners, who worked with us on this, and of course, our communications department with Russ, put a lot of work supporting to get this done.
I've had great, great teachers. They have truly shaped me into the person who I am today.
I like social studies. That's probably my favorite class.
I feel like everyone's welcome here, and there's no like people being mean to other people.
The biggest thing is that if you have a passion for learning, people notice, and they give you opportunities.
Both my kids like going to school. They've had some really wonderful teachers. My fourth grader at I.A. took part in a play, Equally Ever After.
That's so scary.
It was about social justice. This play was the single greatest academic achievement that I've seen the Burlington Schools produce, but it was also just something that Felix really enjoyed being a part of it. I think he felt empowered by it. That's something my wife and I could not have given to him.
Well, I've been doing the Homework Center, which is like an after-school program, for the last maybe 12 or 13 years. I'm the math specialist.
Before I met Mr. Moe, I like hated math. I spent a lot of time with him, learning math and building connections. He taught me a lot of things that are not just related to math.
I think it's very important that we all send the kids the same message that are, we care about them, we want to support them regardless of whatever situation they find themselves, and help them get to wherever they want to get to.
And that is tied directly into equity, making sure that every student, not just the ones that are most vocal, have the most privilege to be able to have connections with their teachers, with admin.
I feel like one of the things that I love about this school is that I do see a balance. I see a lot of services, a lot of direct instruction, and a lot of intervention. I think our school does a great job at making kids feel good about who they are and what they bring.
We take students outside of the building, and we use the city of Burlington as both curriculum and classroom. We spend a lot of time often in school, in our isolated silos, sort of separating ourselves from the practical applications of knowledge in the real world. I think the students walk away with a much better understanding of how the world really works.
It's not just like sitting in a classroom, looking at a screen or reading off a textbook. In the fall, I'm going EVM and hopefully joining the rescue squad, and I'm hoping that from the things I learned from the tech program, I'm a better candidate.
He did his drawing of the kids at their cleanup station. He showed the multiplication. He showed the repeated addition.
We have committed as an entire staff to focus on place-based learning. I guess a way to define what that means is making sure that no matter what we're studying, the content is, it's either embedded in our community in an environmental way or in a social way.
We do do a lot of recycling here in Ms. Brockway's class. She has a fourth-grade class. She assigns people to go around to different classrooms and check in their compost and their recycling and in their trash to make sure all the classes are doing stuff the right way.
We do a lot of focusing here on managing waste, but it's so much more than that.
We only ever like get one world, and we don't want to waste it with filling it up with trash and stuff. You know, every year I get one or two emails where kids are saying, Mr. Moe, you cannot believe how you've impacted my life. Thank you for being caring, thank you for being respectful. And that kind of reinvigorates me every single day. I get up and like, wow, I can do this.
I guess I'm just realizing like how thankful I am. I have no doubt that it's like the teachers and the schools and all opportunities I was given that allow me to be able to like pursue all of my passions right now and are the reason that I'm going to a fantastic school and able to have such a bright future.
I know our parent wanted to be here too, Tyler Doggett, who's participated quite a bit, but one thing I did just remembered on the video there, I have to have a conversation with Kofi about his singing, focus on the mathematics. But thank you very much and look forward to future snippets around a different programming. And if you have some ideas around some specialty programs that we could profile, please let us know.
Thank you Superintendent O'Bang. That was amazing and Russ, we saw you at work all last spring and running around the city and collecting all your actors and actresses, real students and their schedules. Amazing job. Thank you very much for your hard work. Next on the agenda is welcoming Burlington City and Lake faculty and staff that are here, led by Andy Barker. We sent around to board members some literature and funding information and we welcome Andy Barker, Sina Daly, Peter McConville, who are all part of the Burlington City and Lake program. Welcome.
Thank you Claire, hi everybody. Bonnie, are we able to pull any slides up? Perfect look at that. Well done. Thanks for having us here. My name is Andy Barker. I'm a parent of two students here at Burlington High School and also the project director for Burlington City and Lake Semester, which is a new program. It's in its pilot phase and I've got my colleagues here, I'll let them introduce themselves.
My name is Sina Daly and I have two kids at Burlington High School, one at Edmunds Middle School and yeah, part of the team.
And I'm Peter McConville. I have, where are my kids now? One is at CP Smith and one is at Hudson.
So I wanted to kind of talk about three things. One is just make sure that you all know about City and Lake Semester and give you a chance to ask some questions about what that program is all about. Hopefully you had a chance to read some materials that I sent along. I also want to give you an update on where we are in our life cycle here in this pilot phase and then I'd like to put a proposal forward to ask the district to fund this program going forward so we can be a permanent part of what's happening at the high school. So this is a picture of our beautiful city and I think I can speak for all of our team when I say that we felt like there is no better place in the world maybe to do a school program that uses the city as a classroom. We have so many assets in this city, great people. It's a real city with real systems and problems. It also is accessible. We've met with the mayor and city councilors and all kinds of adult professionals in the time we've been running this program. It also has tremendous natural resources, the lake, the inner vale. And so the four of us, and I should just name, our fourth colleague is Dove Stucker, who's a social studies teacher here at the high school. The four of us really came to this project in the beginning because of a passion we had for this place and a kind of teaching that really gets into the hearts and minds of students. And so that's really where this came from. And if you'll go to the next slide Bonnie. The City and Lake Semester is, very briefly, an immersive semester program that uses the city of Burlington as a classroom. It's for juniors and seniors here at the high school. Those students have the opportunity to be based in the city every other day, so on blue days when it doesn't snow. And they receive, that should say one and a half semester credits, I think the left edge is being cut off there. They receive, I'm sorry, five semester credits, which is 2.5 credits overall, and that's English, Social Studies and General Electives credits, which counts as applied research. And if you go to the next slide. Our mission in doing this work really is to empower young people as students and also as members of this community, to make connections for them and some of the design principles that we brought to this project in the beginning. Number one, I think at the heart of this, is to bring together a diverse group of students that really represents this high school and to do the practice and work and play of equity and inclusion, which goes beyond just having representation, but really works on how we create relationships with each other and we create a sense of belonging for all kinds of students. And I would say of all the things that our project has been able to do, that's the one that I'm proudest about. Students who have disabilities, students who are from low-income families, students who've struggled in school in the past, and also students who've found a lot of success in the past, have created relationships with all the other students in that room and have really cultivated a sense of community and belonging. And that's so powerful for young people. It's what I wish for them as they grow up in the world, it's what I wish for our community. A second design principle is really to put the real world experiences and projects at the center of what students are doing. And we do a lot of good learning here at the high school and all the way through our system, but most of it happens in a classroom and so it's really important to complement what happens here at the high school with these other experiences, interacting with other adults and with our city. Community partners are a big part of this, so lots of what we do includes talking to other people in the city and partnering with them. So for example, we've done some research on microplastics in Lake Champlain and that's connected us to a SUNY Plattsburgh researcher, UVM researchers, the Rosalia Project, which is a nonprofit organization. We've gotten to actually work with microplastics in fish, done dissections to see that actually in the food chain, also in little freshwater shrimp things called mycids. And then we've gotten out to North Beach and we've actually done transects where students have been able to collect data and see how much of this microplastic pollution is right here on our beach that looks nice and clean. So really grounding students' understanding around these important issues in real-world hands-on stuff and many other projects too. I'll just name one other one. We've done a consultancy with the city of Burlington around how they are measuring equity. It's a new initiative in the last couple of years and students are great stakeholders in that conversation about what makes a city equitable and how should we measure that? And so they've been great partners in that. And that connects to this last design principle, which is really creating the opportunities for students to use their voice and to take leadership and to see themselves as full members of our school community, our Burlington City and Lake community and also the city of Burlington. So next slide Bonnie would be great. So we've done this project for one year, we're in our second year. I'll show you a quick slide about our life cycle in just a minute. But the materials that I sent out to the board in advance really highlight some positive outcomes. We have worked with EDC, which is a consulting firm that does educational outcomes work. We worked very closely with them over the last year. And some of the positive outcomes that we're seeing, number one, we are doing inclusive teaching and learning. We've got a lot of different students in the program and they report high measures of feeling the belonging. Student engagement, very high level qualitative and quantitative measures and that's, I think as any teacher will tell you, such a big part of being successful in a school setting is to engage students and to really capture their attention. Creating a positive climate, student and faculty in the program report high measures of well-being. Kids want to come, they want to be there. We are, I think, on the path to doing what is a real buzzword these days, but I think a lot of us recognize it as good old-fashioned teaching and learning and that's this idea of deeper learning. Students learning things that take a little longer time, that connect to their own lives, that empower them to use that knowledge and really integrate it into their lives. And finally, community connections. There are some students in our program who have not been to, you fill in the blank, Oakledge Park, City Hall, the South End, to the Hanfords in the North End. And when we go and our students are studying food systems, they are connected to people and to places and opportunities in the city that they otherwise would not be. And I think that's a really important part of our mission in terms of creating opportunities for all kinds of students. So those are some really positive outcomes. Next slide mentions really a couple of challenges that I think we've continued to encounter along the way. We are working within a system that really was not designed for programs like this. And there are a lot of places that shows up. One is really around scheduling. So we've only been able to actually enroll about seventy-five percent of the students who would like to do the program. And we think we can do this with about twenty-five students tops and we have had just about enough students apply. We've been slightly below that benchmark, but if we could, if we could get the schedule to fit better, we wouldn't have any trouble with enrollment in our program. Outreach is challenging and there are very few semester courses at the high school. So if you look at the master schedule, it's actually very hard to go do something unique like the Burlington City and Lake Semester and then build a schedule for the second half. So we like to think in our best moments that we are the kind of change that comes into a system and creates a little bit of tension that helps the system to do things that it ought to do. And just to name the sort of top priority there, it really is about semester courses. That's for our program, that's for dual enrollment opportunities at the college level, that's for students who are failing, struggling and are stuck in a class for an entire year. They can't hit reset halfway through the year and get placed in a section that's better for them. So I think there are a lot of reasons to really look seriously at the semester courses. That's a little aside. The other challenge is faculty workload and I think as all of you know in this room who've tried to do something brand new, it takes a tremendous amount of work to do that. And so our team has worked incredibly hard to make this happen and I think we're getting better at it and more efficient. So those are some challenges. How am I doing on time? Can I talk for a few more minutes?
Yep, you have, yep, three more minutes.
Great. So if you can go to the next slide, I do want you to see the ecosystem that we're working within. This project is a partnership between the Burlington School District and the community. I think that's the truest way to express this. The project team, which is Sina, Peter, Dove and myself, have really tried to connect those two pieces. On the community side, there are many pieces and parts and organizations leaning in who believe in this model and I won't go through all of them. I do want to name that Shelburne Farms is our leading, our leading operational partner, lead community partner. Sina and I are payrolled through Shelburne Farms and the fundraising that we do to support this pilot phase flows through Shelburne Farms. We have a number of community partners that we work with on a day-to-day basis. We also have an advisory board and a steering committee that gives us input. And I also want to name the Burlington Students Foundation, which was our fiscal sponsor in the very beginning of this project. So lots of organizations that we're working with on the community side. And on the school district side, this really does connect into the district's strategic plan. It connects with teachers here in the high school, obviously we're serving students and it also connects in with many elements of the Vermont State Act 77 mandates, including flexible pathways. Next slide please Bonnie. So here's a quick overview of our timeline where we've, where we've come to date here. We are currently in the third year of a three-year pilot phase. That's governed by a memorandum of understanding between Shelburne Farms and the school district. We had a design year in 2017 and 18 that was entirely externally funded. The Agency of Education supported it with a $40,000 seed funding grant. We also raised money from foundations and individuals and that got release time for Peter and Dove and it funded our team's ability to do the design work. Last year was our first pilot year. We continued to have AOE funding, foundation and individual support. And the school district, their share of the budget is the teacher salaries for Peter and Dove that add up to 1.6 full-time equivalents. Next year, I'm sorry, this year is our second pilot year, the third year of this. We have the same funding formula, some external funding from foundations and individuals and the school district funding the teachers in the program. Next year, we would like this to be a permanent program. We'd like the district to embrace this as an important flexible pathway and a way forward towards a broader innovation agenda, program-level innovation that really makes flexible pathways a reality. And so we are asking that the district will support the full project budget for this going forward. Next slide Bonnie. And I'll just put the outline that all of you have received in advance in just the outline form up here. The model, what we'd like to do is continue this program for a period of three to five more years. We would like to continue for our team to be an innovation partner and I know we've got lots of people in the district who are in this ecosystem. I think we're excited about the fact that we have found a model of working in partnership to be able to create program-level innovation in a pretty short timeframe, but to do the design work properly to make this work successfully. And the model that we're proposing is that we would continue this partnership, that the project director role that I currently have would be funded on a contracted basis through Shelburne Farms. And also proposing that the community partner lead role that Sina currently fills would become a district role. And the total price tag on this is about $80,000 for each of those two positions, which I think are a bargain, let me say it that way, and program costs, which includes some administrative overhead, space rental downtown and some program costs, about $45,000. We think we've got a lot to offer the district in terms of continuing to be an innovation partner as we move towards this five-year, three to five-year vision. And I want to say that we're excited to continue being in that conversation with the school district. I hope we can find a way to do that. So be happy to take any questions if we have time for that, Claire.
So we had allotted fifteen minutes. Thank you Andy for staying within that purview and preparing. I know we received the information yesterday, so I know that twenty-three page document, we'll be able to look at it over the next couple of days and ask those questions to the chair. But if at any time right now, people want to have some reflection or some brief comments, we'll do that. If that sounds good. Commissioner Gulick.
I just want to say thank you, Sina, Andy and Peter. I believe that this is the future of education. I think what you're doing is amazing and where we're headed in education and I also, I feel honored to be a part of a district that takes risks and chances and is innovative. And so thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Curry and then O'Bang.
Yeah, I want to thank you too very much for offering this great course to kids who, what you're really doing I think is you're teaching them how to be active participants in a vibrant society. And yeah, I'll agree with Martin, absolutely, it's the future of where we need to go in 21st century education plans. The trick is going to be how to do it, how to expand this kind of course and make it available at different levels in the high school and in the middle schools, I think. So thank you so much. I know it's been a difficult journey just because of the logistics of it all with the kids and walking around the school. I've seen you in groups in the pouring rain, walking up North Street in the middle of the day. And I was really happy to see in the report, the- And I was really happy to see in the report, the Section E on the students served, and I thought it was, it's not a special deal for special kids. You're really making it available to the kids who reflect what Burlington is. And I was really happy to see those numbers listed in the report, and I know that your efforts are to make it even more so, more reflective of the community and the school. So thanks again. It's been fantastic.
Commissioner Olawo.
Well, as you know, I've been around in this since the very beginnings. Not that I had anything to do with it, but they came to the Burlington Students Foundation to be the pass-through for the money that they were getting from grants. And I was so excited about this program back then, and I have stayed excited about this program. And reading those 23 pages last night, I even got more excited about this program. I know this is where we have to go, and I hope we can find the money to keep this going because it is a wonderful example of where education needs to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Olawo. Commissioner Curry.
Thanks for this presentation. It's really helpful, and I agree that the kinds of principles and ethics and approach you use are what I think we want to see throughout the high school. And I have a few questions, and thank you for the opportunity to have a discussion about this because I think, once the budget starts, it's really hard to keep all of the information. I mean, it's a very comparative analysis, so I really just want to take this time to understand everything more clearly. And then also, we have the tape to go back to, which is always nice. So would you describe this approach as a proficiency-based learning approach? And connected to that is, in terms of the high school's proficiency-based resources, are those helpful or used by you, or you completely like, whatever that is, doesn't matter, and we're doing this other thing over here?
What I would say is that our project has tried to connect into the best of many of the lines of thinking about innovation in education. We actually don't use the language of proficiency-based learning a lot in terms of when we talk about what we're doing. So I would say we are, first and foremost, a flexible pathway. You know, that's language that seems pretty clear. We describe ourselves as place-based education. I think that's pretty clear, that that's what we're trying to do. When it comes to proficiencies, we have tried to do assessment in our program in a way because we are an integrated program. So we have an English component, we have a social studies component. I think if you looked at the assignments and assessments there, some of those would look fairly traditional. We also have three credits that are general electives, what we call applied research. And that's a space where we have a separate rubric that we use, and students build a portfolio of evidence that we sit down and do one-on-one assessments with them. And that's looking specifically at categories like engagement, challenge, and risk. What are some of the other categories in there?
Critical thinking.
Critical thinking, inquiry. So that assessment that we're doing, I think, does speak to proficiencies that students are gaining. The transcript that students get at the end of BCL, we are giving number grades as they are getting in other classes at this point. So it's a complicated answer, I would say, as to whether what we're doing is proficiency-based learning. Peter, you want to add something there?
Yeah, I think this is going to work. I think within the examples of the journals that the students produce, and we collect on a bi-weekly basis, we are looking at the same categories, similar to the ones that Andy just shared, over time, and we're actually looking for student progress. So very much a proficiency-based approach there, if students understand when they come in that, you know, what they think is suitable organization, when we really look at that scale, it moves over in the rubric week after week after week as the students become more competent, as they begin to do more critical thinking, as they begin to ask their curiosity. That's one of the things we measure as that begins to build. So within those, we, I would say, are definitely doing some proficiency-based practices. And also with those one-on-one assessments that Andy spoke about, we, at this point, do two of them over the course of the semester, so one at the quarter break and then one at the end of the year. Also proficiency-based, as we ask students to progress along. I think in a truly robust system, we'd be doing that more frequently, you know, as we're sort of figuring things out and figuring out exactly what our assessments look like. We know that in a good proficiency-based system, we're asking students to practice things again and again and again, and we're looking back and we're looking for progress. So those two areas, I would say, are places where we are doing that. At this point in time, given the different projects that we work on, it's tough, unless we're at that 30,000-foot level, to really say, like, zero and go, yeah, that's the exact scale that we're working on, because it shifts. Sometimes we've got students writing press releases, which is communication, but sometimes we've got them, you know, typing up, or presenting data reports, which is also communication, but it takes a very different sort of form. So I think, like, I would say in my own English classes, as I'm still figuring this out, you know, we're figuring it out together, but those two areas, I would say, are journal, and then those one-on-one assessments are definitely leaning on the best proficiency-based practices.
Okay, thanks. And it's my understanding that giving kids a number-scale thing is not at odds with proficiency-based learning. Is that correct?
Yeah, I don't think so at all. I think the difficulty is the conversion. So when a student comes to me and I say, "You're proficient in this," and they go, "Why didn't I get an A?" You know, that's a conversation that we have about learning and about education and about process, and, you know, and the grade at the end of the semester is kind of a cumulative conversation. And I would say that the most meaningful feedback that our students get, too, is narrative. You know, they do end up with a number, you know, they have a letter, but everybody leaves with, you know, a pretty thorough letter that documents their experience and their learning over time, which having to write college recommendations recently are really helpful to go back to, I can tell you that. Pull those up and go, oh, yeah, we did that, we did that, we did that, and really speaks to the student's, you know, individual strengths.
Thanks. And then my two other questions are, number one, I wanted to understand that scheduling barrier more, for those 25% of students, what's going on? We have a scheduling conversation every year, and I still feel like I have a really hard time understanding what you're talking about with that semester course. And then my second question is going to be around the resources and understanding your partnership with Shelburne Farms and why you still need it. And my context for that is that, in looking at the magnet schools, you know, both of them established partnerships with their kind of educational benefactors, Shelburne Farms and the Flynn, and had support for that and a coach in the school, and those supported an entire school. And so I'm just coming at this not from a place of not completely supporting what you're doing and wanting to see it permeate the high school, but from a place of six years of trying to balance resources and knowing what we're up against every year and some background information that I can share later, but just looking at $160,000 for one class in, you know, when we have two magnet schools that received the same thing for entire schools. And so I'm going to need help with that because, you know, you know why, just because of our resource demands.
Do I have to push this button?
Sure. All right. I'll just speak briefly about the scheduling. So it is a little bit convoluted unless you're sort of immersed with the guidance counselor as to figure out blue and white days. But essentially, if you're taking a semester class at Burlington High School in the fall for, you know, period one, you've got to have a semester class that matches up in the spring so you can fill your schedule. So because we meet on blue days only for a semester, if students fill up their blue day schedules with Burlington City and Lake, when they come back in the springtime, they need to fill up their blue days with four courses ideally, right? And so if there are not enough semester offerings available, that is really challenging. And that is the truth of one of the biggest barriers. So for freshmen and sophomores, it's not even an option. There really are no semester classes. For juniors and seniors, there are some elective classes in English and history or social studies that we have added over the last couple of years, and science, I believe, and a math elective class. Or I think science will be next year, an art class. But it's really, really limited for making a schedule for a student to take a semester class. What has happened in the past, this is an equity issue, students who may have gone abroad and had that opportunity with a family to go, you know, to France or something, you know, we made accommodations for certain students to come back in throughout the system. This has been done for years. But now it's more systemically, how can we actually offer students more opportunities to have a flexible schedule that would allow them to do things such as Burlington City and Lake Semester? So we have certainly advocated with guidance, and Meg Harkard is amazing. Oop, I'm off. Do I really need it? Okay. Meg Harkard is amazing, and she understood this walking in the door day one, that, ooh, we need to accommodate this program and other programs, flexible pathways with semester classes. And, yeah, that's all right. So, and Noel, I know also Noel Green, our interim principal, is working on trying to get more semester classes. I will say, other high schools in our state have semester classes and have had them for a long time. So it's something that we really wish for, for Burlington. Does that help you understand how the logistics of that?
Yep.
I just want to add one tiny detail. If you take a, you know, pre-calculus class at Burlington High School, it's not divided up even administratively into a first semester and a second semester. So you have to get an exception if you want to break out of that class and go do anything else. And so even that administrative change would make it a lot easier for us. And today, a student could do the first half, the first semester of pre-calculus at VHS, and then they might do a Vermont Virtual Learning Course for the second half of that exact same course. And when you create that administrative break there, you open up a lot more options. They also could do a CCB class, a dual enrollment class of some other kind, or a program like ours. Easy, buddy. And I'll speak to the second question, which I think is a really good one. And I really won't pretend to have the full perspective on all the things in the district that support innovation, but one thing I think our team has been able to do is create specific program-level innovation. And that's, I think, really hard to do. So what I mean by that is, when we got started on the City and Lake concept, we actually brought a proposal forward that broke a lot of boundaries. So we have students for an entire day. We're linking that class to a white day seminar, so we have students for five blocks. We are obviously breaking outside the walls of the school building. Peter and Dove are teaching in a really different way. There's a whole skill set now, which I think we're cultivating, which is, how do we work in partnership with an adult expert? And now, as a teacher, our role is to facilitate that conversation and make that work for students. And so what I mean by that is, the reason I'm saying that is that I think there's a need and a real opportunity to do more of that program-specific, program-level innovation at the high school. And I think what we'd like to do in the next chapter of our life is continue to run BCL, but also help to incubate, support other kinds of programs, and just to name a couple that I think are potentially exciting. One might be, when you think about the bookends of our whole school system, an integrated arts semester at the high school level. We have an integrated arts academy at the elementary level, and it would be great if those students and others had a place to go carry that forward as high school students. Another opportunity, I think, is in the STEM space. We have a fantastic organization in Burlington, Generator, and I think they would love to partner with Burlington High School on a program there. And a final thing that I think we see is really aligned with our program would be some kind of a senior capstone program, so that a student who's in our program gets all fired up and connected to people in the city and feels really empowered can actually go and create that next-level experience that really capitalizes on that. And we don't really have quite the right containers to do that. So I think our team feels like we're really well-positioned to kind of bring some of the experience and learning from developing City and Lake to that next set of things that I think we can do in the next three to five years. And when we got that brand-new building, we can also have some new programs that are really taking us, I think, where we want to go with education here at the high school.
Can I ask one follow-up question on that note?
Yes.
Thanks. So would you have time to train other teachers in this model if you were fully funded by the BSD?
Yes, I think that would be the vision. So what I'd love to do, if you gave me my wish list, I would love to, and I know we've talked about this with some of our partners, Stephanie Phillips, chief among them, I would love to convene an innovation team that really charts a five-year plan that specifically program-level innovations. And I think our team would like to bring some of our expertise into identifying needs and opportunities, identifying faculty in our current schools, and partnering with them and supporting them, finding the community partner who might help to bring outside funding, and also support on the program side, so that we could do this kind of serial innovation on other programs. And we'll find the time, if we have the opportunity, to do that work.
Thanks. Great. Commissioner Curry, great questions. Thank you for asking those. Commissioner Sowers.
Thank you all. It's great. I love this program. I'm a huge supporter, and thank you for being creative and innovative to bring it to us. I want to talk about that ability to replicate this program because I do feel like this is what we need at the high school, so I loved this question. So thinking about how we can replicate it. Getting to the master's schedule, it would be nice to also think about how we could use BTC. So BTC has also those scheduling problems, and it would be great to all sit down together and say, like, here's the issues we're having, because all of the BTC, these innovative programs, dual enrollment, we need our kids to be able to access them. And so what is it that we're lacking? How do we better schedule it? I think, how do we promote it through our guidance counselors? All these things, it's kind of getting this, you know, approach, targeted approach would be awesome. And then I did have one budget question as well. So I think you talked about Shelburne Farms has been doing it the past couple of years, and your proposal for the next three years was that we were going to kind of take over everything in-house. Is that BSD?
Well, the specific proposal that I think is the best approach would be to bring the community partner lead role, which Sina currently has, in-house, so that would be a district role. And I think we have made a lot of connections in the community that could support other programs, and so I think that makes a lot of sense to have that in-house. The project director role and innovation kind of partner role, I think, fits better with a community partner, with Shelburne Farms. That's where I'm currently housed, if you will. But I think it's actually very helpful to have that extra measure of autonomy and frankly, connections to other funding opportunities that come through. You know, there's a little bit of an inside-outside game that we can play eventually. So our project, I think, the City and Lake Project, I think is, would be very attractive to a funder like the Barr Foundation, but only if it's inside the school district. On the other hand, innovation to do an arts semester might actually have the best momentum if it's starting from outside the school district in the same way we did with City and Lake. So my proposal would be that the project director role would be contracted through Shelburne Farms, and that the community partner lead would be in district, new role.
Great. So we'll do follow-up questions on email, if that's okay? Just because I know we have district leaders here that will have to present. Well, thank you, and thanks for being transparent with your numbers and your budget. We'll also, you know, walk through them with Director Labrie as well, and I know follow-up questions like Kendra are important so that we do know. And Superintendent Bang, my question to you is, when you meet with systems leaders who are here tonight, who represents BCL? What is their voice? Is it?
Yeah, actually, there are a number of other initiatives as well, too, that would love an opportunity to speak to the board to present around possible initiatives and things like that. So hopefully, there'll be an opportunity for that as well, too. But I do want to thank this group, that they very certainly persevered over the last few years in trying to build the program. And I'm glad that you've taken on the deeper learning approach, and we were talking about what type of program, and your program is a deeper learning sort of approach. And, you know, challenges, you know, how do we replicate that to offer more opportunities? And there are so many challenges, and you talked about scheduling, and we've been trying to change the schedule for a number of years, and there are other barriers within that as well, too. as well, too. But one of the things I would say, and you mentioned it, I hope you're having conversations with a curriculum director, Stephanie Phillips, because she'll be able to support you and also be able to probably give access to where we could probably get grants and funds to, to do other pieces. And in those conversations, she would need measures, you know, how are you assessing the program and, and those type of things. I would also would say that for the board to continue their conversation, you probably need some hard numbers in terms of what you have there. I know you've got, you know, FTE, you've got A, but like specific, what's the, you know, if you came here today and you said, "We needed $300,000," or whatever it is, like, eventually we're going to have to get to that, to, because that'll also give the assessment in terms of, oh, if you had to do two of those programs, you know, what would that cost, or that kind of thing. So thank you for your efforts, and thank you for serving our students.
Yeah, thank you.
It's been a privilege to do this, this work, so thanks all very much. We'd be happy to support with any other information that would be helpful.
Great. Thank you. Next on the agenda is Commissioner Fisher is on the line. Okay, we are going to go to item number six A, assigning a delegate to vote on potential statewide teacher healthcare agreement. Commissioner Fisher?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep. Yes.
Chair, thank you, Chair Wall. Tonight, we're talking about the process by which we deliberate and vote on the statewide healthcare agreement. We're not going to discuss the facts of the negotiations right now, because we normally do contract negotiations like this in a second session. So as per my chat with Chair Wall, what I'm proposing is that, I'm sorry, so quick background is that right now it's an arbitration between the teachers' union and a representative, a representative body committee representing the VSA. It is not the entire VSA. It is not the VSA staff. They were very insistent that we say that. So these are VSA members, so school board members from across Vermont that are negotiating. So they are in arbitration, and that arbitration may end up with a decision that we don't vote on, but if the two parties do continue with their negotiations outside arbitration and come to an agreement, we will be asked to sign off on that agreement. So my proposal is, once we get told, we're going to, we have an agreement to review, we do a special board meeting where we review the facts of the case and the proposal, and we as a board vote, and then we have a delegate that enters that vote on our behalf.
Great.
All thoughts, apprehending? Questions?
Okay. Commissioner Curry?
So did I just hear Mike, did you just propose the process?
No, he explained it.
Correct. The process is simply having a special board meeting if we are asked to vote.
So would it only be one board meeting? And the reason I ask that is because if the person representing us, what I'm curious about is when we would receive the information we need to make the vote, so that we have time to digest it and ask questions of the person, so then they can go get information. So I would like to see the process give us enough time to get the information, digest, ask questions, and have our representative be able to get the information we need to make a good decision.
I, I think, let me just repeat, make sure I heard you correctly. You're asking that we have, you have enough time to get the information, digest it, and in order to make a board decision?
Ask questions.
Once the proposal is on the table. So that having only one meeting would make me nervous, because if we didn't have all the information, it would be hard to come to a good decision that same meeting.
So let me check. I believe that, I believe that we only do have five days. We just check my information, so if necessary, then we need to have multiple meetings within those five days.
Or could we just get a written proposal, so that we can understand it and send written questions?
Yes. I, I don't know for sure how it's going to play out. I haven't gotten that information. But absolutely, I would expect that we would have, be able to review that proposal before coming into that meeting.
Hence the five days. The term of the five days. So we'd have.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Hence, that's why they denote five days from the time that they give it to us. But again, you're going to give us clarity on that, and then we'll ask, per Commissioner Curry, that we either, we meet twice from the, you know, receivable, you know, receivership of the information to when we vote, if it's necessary to meet, to receive the information.
I believe that we can distribute the information at half a meeting, and then make the decision. Let's, let's say we have a meeting within five days, and we'll then deliberate at the board and decide whether we need another meeting.
Great.
I think it's, I think that's the most efficient way.
Okay. Thank you for explaining that. Thank you for your question. All right, so.
Let me ask Commissioner.
Commissioner Wick?
Commissioner Fisher, are you looking for any kind of motion tonight, or are you just explaining the process?
Need to elect a delegate.
I'm proposing the process, and then we also need to decide on a delegate that we notify the VSA.
Okay. And did you want to be that delegate?
I, I would serve as nominee.
Yes. That's what we discussed. So would you like to nominate?
I think Martine would like to nominate.
I'll nominate Mike Fisher to be the delegate.
Thank you. Commissioner Golick, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Commissioner Walls. So, any discussion? All right, all those in favor of nominating Commissioner Fisher to be the delegate for the VSA statewide teacher healthcare agreement, vote, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Fisher, for offering your service to that. Anything else?
Thank you, Chair Wall.
Great. Next on the agenda is district priorities. Commissioner Wick?
Oh, thank you. I suppose we'll keep this brief.
Yes.
You've all seen the district priorities, because we voted on them back in June. Last week, we decided to just chop columns two and three and restate column one. So it's all up there. If there are any questions, let me know, or, you know, it's a discussion, really.
Great.
But it is what it is at the moment.
Thank you, Commissioner Wick. Any questions? All right, moving on. Commissioner Fisher? Yes?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mike.
I just want to point, I just want to point out that, that I changed some of the wording
that because Superintendent will be leaving the district before we do our board retreat, I just asked him in that last sentence to give us a report in June 2020.
Great. From July. Great. Okay, great. Thank you very much, Commissioner Fisher. All right. Then we will move on to item number eight, budget. Thank you, district administrators, for staying, or for being here. And Superintendent Bang?
Great. I'll call the team up. Actually, we're going to start, we're going to start with especially, I think, last board meeting, you had an opportunity to get a drill down from Miriam around the EL, and we said it would be a good opportunity to have the same for special ed. So Director of Student Support Services, Laura Nugent, is prepared to give you a run-through, and hopefully give you a better understanding around the special ed funding and how resources are allocated throughout the district.
Great.
And then we'll move into the bigger conversation around budget.
Great. Thank you, Laura.
So I, I know how well our friend Miriam did, so I followed her format to make it a little more consistent. So you go to the next slide. I always think I'm loud, but I'm told I'm not. Okay. So, and I know that you've had this in advance, so I won't read every single word to you and save you that pain. But there are, there are categories of expenditures in special education, as you know, and those include things like supplies and related services. You know, related services are things like occupational therapists, physical therapists, that kind of thing, and behavior interventionists. Next slide, please. We have sources of funding that include local funding, as you know, and grants such as IDAB, which is federal dollars, and local funding is administered through the schools. So when I say local funding, I mean some that come directly to Student Support Services and some that come through the school programs. Next slide, please. Principles of governing, governing these allocations, we try, we are, we work hard to make sure that these, these resources are distributed equitably. So when the need is greater in one place, it should, the resources should be more present there. But I will say that our need seems to be pretty distributed, we have a lot of need in our district. So special educators work with kids with disability, but we do, and are fortunate enough that those silos are starting to be broken up. I'm really pleased that that's the case. That has its own challenges, of course, but we're working toward, with the state, toward that new way of thinking. Grants are used to supplement, but may not supplant, of course, local funding for our own mandated and our own initiatives. So the goal is to provide free and appropriate public education. That's FAPE, and you may hear that acronym quite a bit. And that means that kids with disability should have access to public education in the same way, I should say, the same type of access that they might have if they didn't have a disability. And we provide resources and supports that allow them to access that, because their disability precludes their access. Seven steps to the evaluation process. Well, it's very complicated. This is the broad strokes. I, I don't know if you're all familiar with it, but I do want to point out that in case anybody ever asks you, that a person is not required to put a request for an evaluation in writing, and anyone with standing may make that request. So if you're ever asked that question, please relay that information to people. There's, it's not a formal request. It's not required. Services we provide, I see, services, individual special ed plans. So processes in Vermont, determination of disability. Of course, we have a finding of adverse effect. Adverse effect is unique to Vermont. I believe we are the only state that uses it. It was required, it's a, it's a measure that requires that a student with a disability demonstrates failure in school prior to qualifying for special education. There are pros and cons to that. It's less of a, it's less dependent on people's opinions, so it's less of a qualitative measure, more of a quantitative measure. But you can see probably why the, the model where failure is a requirement is not necessarily a great one at times. So our, our primary practice is, or required practice is least restrictive environment. In Reno, Vermont is values inclusion, as I believe we all know that. Again, that comes with its pluses and minuses for kids with disability and those without. Mostly pluses, though, because kids get to, get to grow up with their peers, and get to grow up with kids that they'll then, when they're adults, know in the community, and then they can, they have shared experiences. It makes the little turkey to provide the right services in, in six elementary schools, two middle schools, a high school, and two alternative programs, however. And we cannot put kids with disability in a school that is designed to provide better services, because we, because we wouldn't do that with kids without disability, if that makes sense. So we can't silo our kids. So caseload and staffing is always a kind of a tricky thing. Every year, I look at what's projected to go into our schools based on current enrollment. I try to do a quarterly, a quarterly look at our records. Sometimes it's really more like every trimester, but ideally quarterly, and to see if allocations of services are still relatively equitable. As of October 29th, our average caseload in the district between K to 12 was 20, was 12. When I say caseload, I mean IEPs, and that's an average. There are some that have more, and there are some that have less, as you might imagine. Students with IEPs and 504s, 504 is the American with Disabilities Act, is a little higher at 15. Again, some have more and some have less. Some of our schools have a higher ratio of disability per their enrollment than others, as they comes to mind. This is very, has the highest disability percentage with the lowest enrollment overall. Okay? And this is the distribution of our staff here that, if you take a look at, that explains, again, this is, this is last on October 29th. We don't really have major shifts over the course of the year. Like I said, I try to check to make sure there isn't, but there isn't a significant shift. Some school, don't drop to almost nothing in some schools and go way high in the other. It tends to balance out, although I will say that Flynn Elementary tends to get a lot of late enrollment compared to some of the others, but they all, they all get some. Okay? And here are some resources. If you're interested in reviewing some of the things I share, these are really great resources. I particularly want to draw your attention to, obviously, the Vermont Education, Agency of Education, but the Vermont Family Network is an outstanding organization in our, in our state that provides supports to families with children with disabilities, and they are a wonderful asset to our district as well. There's a lot of great resources on their site, if you're interested in checking it out, if you have time. And that's, that's what I have.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll ask if board members have any questions, follow-up questions for
Ted? I just had, I didn't understand, when you say IEP and 504, do you mean students that have both of those, or just that there are students, some on 504s and some on?
Yes, some on 504s and some on IEPs. If you think of it as a 504, as a student with a disability who doesn't, who may not qualify for special education, because they may not have adverse effect or need for services, but the disability is something that, or they may not fall into the categories under special ed. There are specific categories, 13 of them. So a student with anxiety, for example, might qualify for a 504 plan, because it is a disability that impacts one or more major life functions, but a person would not have both.
Commissioner Curry?
Yeah, I realized, I don't think this is on, but I realized that after the presentation last year, what I'd also like to understand for both, I mean, not last year, last week, for both the EL presentation and this one, what is the special education budget, and what are the sources of funding, maybe by proportion?
So we have an IDAB grant that is allocated, it has to be spent specifically and exclusively on special education, it's federal dollars, it's roughly $1.2 million, that primarily funds the early ed program. That's about, I would say, 85 to 90% of that budget funds our, our early ed program. That's not, we, we have autonomy in determining how we spend those funds, but it does have to be for special ed exclusively. The local funds, I would have to ask Nathan what the total dollars are. I've never looked at the total dollars, but we stay within our local funds there as well. And most of that is salaries. The vast majority of the special ed budget is for salaries for teachers and parents and that kind of thing.
And so are you saying that the only funds that support special ed are the IDAB grant and local?
Yes.
I'm trying to, if you go to slide three, I think it's slide three. Yep, those are the three categories of funding, right? So if you want.
But the one and two are actually both local funds, and maybe, well, anyway, the local funds that are given directly to Student Support Services and the ones, the IDAB grant are the two fun, sources of funds that I have control over within my office, but the local funds administered through individual schools, meaning like teachers assigned to the schools, and that kind of thing are, are fixed amounts that aren't things I control. Other than the fact that, you know, I determined that how many staff we need in a school at the beginning of the year, other than that, that those are assigned to schools specifically. That's why I meant by number three.
So could we get the amounts for those, please?
Yeah, I would have to defer to Nathan for that.
Right.
You can get this out.
Thank you.
A little more $16 million probably total.
Right, but could we get the breakdown, please?
So are you looking for the breakdown on each individual?
To go with Laura's presentation, these three categories.
Okay.
And, and just more clarity, maybe Nathan needs to come up, just more clarity. So what the breakdown is, and more clarity on why these local funds administered through Student Support Services and through individual schools are segregated, and what that means. Is that a restriction, or what is that?
Yeah. So I'm assuming you, you want to know the, how much money we spend in each school for special ed?
No, no, no. My question is, what's the amount we spend on one? What's the amount we spend on two? What's the amount we spend on three? And why are one and three segregated? Is that, what, why? Is that some kind of restriction with the funds, or is that just our, the way we do things? things?
I think you.
And maybe these questions are for Nathan.
Okay. So Nathan, you, and I know that you had done some explaining at a prior board meeting about salaries, for example, you're not giving, you know, each school will get the educators, and you're not denoting that each school, let's say, gets $300,000 in salaries, you're giving, you're not denoting the, separating the salaries, if I'm making myself clear.
Commissioner Curry, I know you want specific numbers for each, and what are the parameters for utilization for each of the categories?
Right. Thank you.
And again, we want, for this meeting, for the overview, you can give us, you know, a report back.
Why don't we, I'm sure Director Lavery can make some comments, but we should probably send a detailed document, so you can actually see the numbers and where it goes and why it's being spent, that, because that is a conversation that happens off at this table, right? Because you want to, you want to support this thing or that thing, and we say, no, you can't do that because it's this funding and that's funding, and I think that's what you're asking.
Right, yeah, thank you.
Great. So Nathan, we'll follow up with you, or do you want to?
Sure, yeah, no, that's fine. I just want to be clear, like, the distinction, there is a distinction there, but it's not a hugely significant distinction. I mean, I think all we're talking about between one and three is that the, that there can be funds that we put in individual school budgets that are still special ed reimbursable expenses that gives them a little bit of flexibility just to do whatever might come up. But by and large, spending on special ed, a new fancy piece of equipment or something like that, right, is coming through student support services. And the reason that that is, is of course, in any given year, you don't necessarily know, it's not really the school's responsibility to, you know, have to buy one of these things or whatever it might be. The idea is that, generally speaking, special ed funds are administered centrally. But again, just for kind of convenience and to have a little bit of flexibility in small items that come up that don't really need to go all the way through a process of going to the central special ed department, or student support services department, there's some money that the schools can just do without kind of like checking in, in essence, if that makes sense.
Commissioner Walts, and then Pillsbury.
Director Lavery, I've already put in a couple of requests regarding special education funding, and, you know, I'm hoping that in addition to Liz's questions, you're going to lump in some of that, some of the things I've asked about.
Yeah, I don't, I actually, now that you mention it, I had brought some content for that last meeting, I can, I can check, see if I still have it, just because we thought we'd hold off. I don't remember how much of it was addressed in this or not, so maybe you can remind me.
I expected there to be a more comprehensive financial piece of this report. I was thinking, I mean, there's no mention of Medicaid funds too, so I'm thinking we need, I'm not understanding how.
So Medicaid funds, we get reimbursement for our services that we provide in special education, but special ed cannot use the funds.
So these are things that I sincerely need in writing, so that, I totally appreciate these presentations, because I do read them. So hearing that, it's not, I'm not going to put all the pieces together about, because there's a lot of moving parts, and I totally understand that, but I'm not going to be able to get a snippet of what you're saying right now, hear about some of the requests I put in from Director Lavery, and then I need time to put it together.
Sure.
Okay. Commissioner Pillsbury.
Yes, I appreciated your presentation, and one thing that, as looking at, I guess on slide 10, one thing I wanted to know was, how many of our IEP students are sent out of district? And number two, how many, do we receive any out of district students to our district, like, special ed programs, that are tuitioned into our special ed programs, like On Top and Horizons?
Yes, we have, I believe, five seats that are guaranteed in Horizons, and On Top does take tuition students. That being said, we have about 20 to 22 students that are placed outside of district in independent schools, such as Baird or Mosaic, schools like that.
But are their numbers being listed here, or are they in addition to the numbers you've listed here?
They are kids that are in our total child count, but not, they aren't assigned to schools generally.
They're not assigned here, okay. So we have, there's significant, I think, more students who are receiving through the taxpayer money help in special ed that are not, because they're not receiving in our district.
Yes.
But we are receiving students from other districts who are paying their tuition.
Only a few, though. There's not very many, I don't know the exact number, like, but generally speaking, On Top is by and large populated with Burling, students who are from Burlington families.
Okay, and, okay, there could be up to five, you're saying, but?
That's for Horizons.
Horizons has guaranteed seats for some of, like South Burlington, but that being said, in On Top, it's a little bit tricky because the students there, I don't want to characterize entirely, but there's a higher level of residential transancy.
Right, I understand that, okay. I just wanted to know if these numbers were, there are other numbers that we aren't hearing this here?
Yes.
Students, I don't mean, I mean, there are other students we're serving.
Right, we have, we have 723 students in our child count as of last December, so of that, of that group, about 20 to 22 of them are out of district placements, those numbers, when I say independent programs?
Right.
And those numbers tend to wax and wane because kids are mobile.
Right, that's true, I understand.
Hi.
Hi Laura.
Commissioner Curry, thanks.
Hi Laura, thank you for the information. I'm, I don't really understand the chart under distribution and action, and maybe, maybe if you could just lead me across the columns?
Sure.
And explain one, like, pick any school.
So let's, let's pick Flynn, just because she talked about that, so we, that's what I was going to ask, like, you're adding the 504s and the IEPs?
Uh huh, so, yeah, if we look at Flynn, you see the total enrollment, when I took these numbers in October, the end of October, we're 299 there, right? There were six students with 504 plans and 71 with IEPs. There are five special educators there, and that means that their caseload divided, the number of kids with IEPs divided by the number of special educators, there's 14 in this case.
Oh, that's what I get, so that's the number of caseloads for those?
For, under, for IEPs, but a lot of special educators, and especially in elementary, also case managed kids with 504, just not the case at the high school, for example. But anyway, so that means their average caseload, if you count both 504s and IEPs, the different kids, for 15 at Flynn on average. There are 16 paraeducators currently assigned there, and that's assigned based on need in student IEPs. And that, that can flex a little bit over the course of the year. The number of IEPs per para then means there are, then the next column that's sort of yellowy, means that if you take the number of kids on IEPs and divide it by the number of paras assigned, there are four students with IEPs for every para. That falls within, actually below the recommended level for, it was in Chittenden County, the directors of special services recommend between five and seven IEPs per para educator as a, you know, sort of like a baseline, to give it a sense. And then at the very end, para-special educator ratios to students, ratios of four as well.
Thank you very much, now I understand it. And just one more question about paras, so is it still really difficult to find?
Yes. It's harder and harder to find qualified paras, you know, there, any paras really right now, I don't believe, there's some of our schools that haven't had, they have more allocated than they've been able to hire. And, you know, currently, our biggest challenge is to find people who have a skill set that we need.
Can you talk briefly just about BHS and what you worked on this year with, is it SD and Associates, or just how they were valuable?
Absolutely, one of the systems that we're finding useful, and it's still a little experimental, but it's not, you know, it's not groundbreaking, but it's a good system, is to create something that's called levels at the high school, it's also a system called Cabs within our lower grades, but I'll speak to levels. SD Associates is a behavior-based support system that provides us with trained para, they're like paras, but they're behavior interventionists, they're a little bit, they've got a higher level of training, and SD Associates also supervises these folks and makes sure that they're, they're doing a good job. They also replace people when they're, when they are out sick, there's a lot of advantages to having these folks do this. And what we're doing at BHS this year is creating a system that allows students who are, again, highly mobile to move in and out, so that we aren't constantly having to hire a new set of supports for every new person that comes in, but able to have kids move, not only that, move in when they need support and move out when they don't. These are, and when I say these kids need supports, these are really high needs kids, and I think that anybody who's been in our schools have seen some of that, kids that are, can be, can be very aggressive and need extra supports in learning how to be students in schools, so they can be successful. The other program that's similar to that that's in our middle and elementary schools called Cabs through Howard Services, and what makes that a little distinctive is that they still do provide the Howard Inclusion Model where they have a behavior interventionist with a student throughout the day, but we're given a number of points, so if we're not using all those points for that type of service, we can also use them for functional behavioral assessments, for consultations, for anybody, even kids without identified disabilities, which can get us ahead of the game in terms of serving kids' needs.
Commissioner Almo.
I just wanted to know, when you, when you do IEPs and 504s, there are kids that are, have high special needs? That need a para most of the day, if not all day. Are these among these, or are they?
Yes, absolutely are. So you see that numbers can be somewhat, I don't want to say necessarily, but numbers can be somewhat difficult to really understand, because, you know, there, you could have five kids on an IEP that really don't need a lot of support, or you can have a kid, a child with a 504 that needs a lot, and I think, you know, people can speak to that, right Theresa? So, but, but if you look at the overall, overall numbers, you see a balance there. There are, what we, we struggle with, though, is we don't want to assign a paraeducator to a student who is so aggressive that they've injured the principal. So we then start looking for supports that are a higher level. So, and that can be hard to find, there are wait lists, those independent schools we've talked about, they're wait lists, some of them are out until the beginning of next year. They're just, this, this mental health needs are growing dramatically throughout the state and throughout the country. So, and that's a big part of what we're struggling with.
So when it comes to budget time, we'll follow up with the information that we've requested from Director Lavery and yourself for explanation, and then how did your, I know you talked about some of the positions we haven't filled yet in the paras, but based on the special educators that we were able to hire this year from last year's budget and your request, how is that going?
I think it's going very well. I appreciate the additions that we've made, especially, we have 3.5, three half-time special educators that are well, are married to, well, two of them are married, their position is married to an interventionist position, which we found useful. It's difficult to hire a .5, you know, a part-time person, so we still haven't filled one of the .5s at CP Smith, and we are, I think that's going to happen, but it's been a bit of a challenge, again, unemployment being so low, that's been impacting us as well. So, that being said, we are still an attractive district to work for because of our diversity and our central location to the schools, and we have good relationships with UVM and St. Michael's, which have great programs for special educators, and we are attracting people from out of state. But I, I also, I wouldn't want to see any change, any reduction in special educators by any stretch. I would suggest that we, I would suggest that we also think seriously about bolstering programs for reading. I support Kathy's desire to have Orton Gillen Cam universally throughout the district, I think that would help, that's a game changer. A lot of things, ways to engage kids with disabilities, or preferably prior to, prior to becoming identified with a disability, we don't wait till they fail, then we will have a lower child count, and we'll all be in a better place.
And I think it would be, would it be okay to just share, I know you had been speaking with Tracy Rubman here at BHS and you work collaboratively, that, you know, they, we have done a great job with our ISN and our special ed students here at BHS, but they are in need of 45-minute classes, they talked about offered in math, literacy, social studies, and we really, as a board, need to be educated on that, and we look to your guidance to let us know what those classes are here at the high school, to truly.
If I may add too, that if we could, we have an opportunity to do some more training with our special educators, we, we do have a need for mentorship support of our special educators. There is an increasing demand from the Agency of Education to demonstrate efficacy, both quantitatively and qualitatively, this is becoming, every year, year the demand becomes greater. And I just, I want to make sure that we support our special educators who have a high level of requirement to understand special ed law and to perform without flaw. It's a high level, they work there, they're very hard.
Well, on behalf of the board, I know from August to now, you're a team of one, even though you're supported by the district, we all thank you, Laura, for your leadership and your acceptance of, you know, I know you went through AOE, you know, visits last week and this week, and we support you and know that you have our support. And before Teresa Witt leaves, I just want to acknowledge as well, you know, to have a special educator like yourself, a lifetime educator, you know, under the tutelage of so many, thank you for your, for your career here and your work. I've just seen absolute students in need, you know, graduate from your work, doing so profoundly well, so thank you. Yes, thank you, and Laura, again, thank you for this presentation, and we'll follow up with you.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so we'll move right into the budget. The one thing I will add to Laura's presentation, I do think that the board does need, what was missing is the financial document, to give you some specifics. I mean, you can always refer to the budget line item we have on there, I'm looking at it right now, and you can pull out stuff, but we'll do a memo that gives you some specifics, I think that would be helpful to know where the big chunks are, and where does it go, and why is it spent, so then when you're using that language, board members understand, you know, where it's coming from, and so we'll do that and add that to that piece. With that, we're going to move to the, the next phase in the budgeting. So this is budget season, I hope the board is ready for next couple of months of doing this analysis, and I know the board has encouraged us to continue to involve our staff and our administrators in the development of the budget. So today's presentation that Nathan's going to leave has, the major chunk of it is the input from our staff and what they're recommending that needs to be included into the budget. So that's the conversation that you're going to have, and we're fortunate enough to have representatives here today that will speak to some of the pieces, and give you some of the rationale, give you some context around those pieces. So with that, I'll turn it over to Nate, and you guys want to get closer, so we can get to the mic quicker when we get to your.
Or we can just bring the mic over to them. We can, you can stay there, Jeff will bring the mic, the public comment mic over there?
Okay.
Or is that handheld?
Well, there's a mic here and there's another mic there, so we can just spread out.
Okay, but if you want to just go to the next slide here, so some of this I won't spend a lot of time on, but I just wanted to point out and recommend folks, it's funny how it's, it's being a little cut off by the projector there, huh? Interesting. In any event, this is the mission statement, I think it's just good to have this as a little touchstone before we dive into the particulars of the budget recommendations. And I outlined here the process that includes, obviously, an input process, prioritization of ideas for new investments, projection of revenues, expenditures, something you'll see in December, obviously, the board's role in review and feedback, tax analysis and so forth, culminating in a meeting day vote. And we have been going through a process, a few board members participated at various stages in the consultation phase. There remains open a, an online budget survey that you can direct constituents to who have an interest in providing some feedback but are not able to come to public comment. This just slide just briefly summarizes the goals of the process and the kind of basic steps that were gone through. I typically wrote principles here, although this really applies to directors as well, in terms of them both going to their, starting by going to their staff, having conversations at the building level, meeting as a group to develop recommendations as a group, sharing those recommendations with directors such as Laura, Stephanie, Miriam that you've heard from, to try to align the ideas coming out of schools with some of the ideas that are being considered by those department directors. And then a really important step, obviously, is prioritization of the various recommendations. And so as we move forward, you're going to see each slide, and so far, we've just kind of put it by, either by school level or by department, but the key to keep in mind on these following slides is that they are in priority order as determined by the particular group, so the first item they identified as being the most important investment from that particular slide, so I think that's just important to understand what went into that, that they put a lot of time and effort into. put a lot of time and effort into prioritizing. So with that, we can start with the preschool. And Stacy Curtis, our director, wasn't able to make it in today due to, due to the conditions, but I can speak to this, and I'm sure I can get an assist from, from Joe if I need it. She identified two, two needs, one being a parent liaison for, to conduct some home visits and parent coaching. And then the other is a board certified behavior analyst. I can't really tell you in detail about that role, my understanding is pretty limited, but here's what I'll say, BCBA's are a higher level of behavior support. I'll turn it over to Joe to go in detail, because you're going to see that same request on the elementary slide as well. These are cumulative, and when you see it on the elementary slide, you'll see that there's another three there. So what we're really talking about is four BCBA's across all of the elementary schools and our preschool classrooms. So that's preschool. Joe, you're up.
Welcome. Well, moved down.
Okay, so thank you so much for having me. I think because I'm new, I drew the short straw. That's why I'm sitting at the table here tonight, but thank you for having me, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the board. So Burlington Elementary School principals are grateful for the opportunity to share our requests with student support, with student support outcomes for now and for the future. Our elementary school principals, along with Stacy Curtis representing Burlington Preschool Operations, have identified two high-yield, high-leverage support strategies to work to improve systems. During this process and over the course of the previous month, we've met several times to gain perspective, to get feedback, and to discuss our common priorities. All elementary school administrators are in agreement that the number one challenge to our success currently is that of supporting crisis-level behaviors. Managing crisis-level behaviors has an impact on the learning of all students. The learning environment is interrupted in a way that creates stress for all students. Teachers can be left frustrated and feel disempowered, and administrators are not meeting the goal of instructional leadership. Our current strategies are supportive in keeping students in school and getting them back to class, but this is often a Band-Aid strategy for deeper-rooted problems which take time and direct support. Our collective recommendation is to hire four full-time board certified behavior analysts, commonly referred to as BCBA's, to support building the capacity of staff, administrators, and most importantly, students in crisis at Burlington's elementary schools. A board certified behavior analyst will provide expertise for teams in creating, implementing, evaluating, and supervising a variety of interventions, and specialization in behavior management and developing behavioral analytic, analytical interventions. Support students' planning room staff in managing behaviors directly. Work with classroom teachers to gather behavior and environmental data to make recommendations. To observe and create behavior plans, including the development of functional behavior assessments. To directly implement with classroom teachers and parent educators, behavior plans with students and families, which offer the greatest chance for success. To supervise parent educators and to deliver some of the necessary training that is currently being outsourced. And to continue to work in integrating restorative practices into Burlington School District's climate and discipline systems. In my previous work, we found that the BCBA position was an invaluable addition to our administrative team, which offered skillful responses in our most challenging circumstances. The four BCBA positions would be split amongst the elementary schools, and one also, or three amongst the elementary schools and one to our preschool program, used in an on-call basis. The goal is to invest in high-quality specialized support to systematically respond to student needs. So that's our request for the current, what's in, with the kiddos that are in school right now.
It is.
Our second request, high-yield, high-leverage strategy, is to talk about building for the future. We're asking that we create and staff two classrooms that would welcome four and five-year-old students in a preschool kindergarten transitional classroom. Students entering classrooms with summer months, birthdays, are often developmentally not prepared for the rigors of kindergarten. Some students do not have the opportunity to attend, to attend high-quality preschool programs, and thus their transition to kindergarten can be challenging. Some early birthday four-year-olds are fully prepared for kindergarten and are in supporting their needs without available space in Burlington preschool programs. We're also not meeting the needs of these students. These two classrooms would be in place of two current kindergarten classrooms still taught at, by elementary-level teachers with the support of an early childhood special educator and a general education parent educator. One classroom would be designated in the south end and one in the north end of Burlington. For five-year-olds, this would be a bonus year where deemed by the professional staff the opportunity to enter either kindergarten the following year or first grade the following year would be an option intentionally planned for by the school staff during the spring semester of that school year. Through our screening processes and readiness surveys, as well as with contact with families and work with our preschool programs, we'd be more than ready to develop classroom rosters with fifteen students to begin with, but with the flexibility to add three or four more students in a classroom for the students during the month of September that we're noticing that are not meeting the rigorous standards, having even diminished stamina days in, in the early months of their school, school experience. These two requests are strategies that we believe will support systemic, long-term improvements for our students and our school communities. So those are the two big ones. I'll move on to kind of the smaller level requests, but those are the ones that we believe will offer the most high-yield, the most impact for, for now and for the future. We're also requesting to further develop the program made last year. Thank you to the board for recognizing this need in offering a general education power educator to each of the kindergarten classrooms in district. And to increase the number of classroom teachers at the Sustainability Academy from ten to twelve to support straight-grade level instruction and to move away from multi-age classrooms. Sustainability Academy currently is the only elementary school in Burlington School District that has multi-age classrooms, i.e. third and fourth graders are, are in a classroom together. This continuous change of graded level assignment and configuration is not sustainable for the staff and students at SA. The common core standards and curriculum utilized in Burlington School District do not support multi-age classrooms and place students at a disadvantage in, in being housed in a multi-age looping. We're grateful to have the support of the school board and the Burlington community. This support and the excellent work each day across the Queen City with our staff and teachers has us on the trajectory for great success in the future.
Thank you. Great presentation, Jim. Thank you.
So just a couple of points to make sure it's clear. So the first two items on the list there, we refer to it as the early kindergarten initiative that Joe spoke about. So those are kind of a package, so to speak, right? If you're going to do it, you want both of those things. If you're not going to do it, you don't need to do either of them. But just to make clear, those are, those are kind of a package deal, both referring to the early kindergarten initiative. And there's a few other items on the list, including an estimated $100,000, which would be to increase the number of workdays for parent educators, their contract, and we would have to negotiate this because it's in the collective bargaining agreement, but their contract calls for 180 workdays. And so the idea here would be to add some additional workdays, which would, would be additional days that training and professional development could occur. Because as folks probably know, they, our student, our number of student days is typically 177 or so, give or take how many snow days are made up. Teacher contracts, 187 days, parent contracts, 180. So you can see the difference there in terms of the amount of non-student days that parents are able to work. And obviously, when you only have a few extra days, it's limiting with respect to the type of training you can offer and how much, how much parents can get exposed to whatever initiatives we're, we're putting in place. And the 1.9 FTEs for the UA teachers, right now typically at these schools, one of the challenges is just that they don't, in a few of their roles, they don't have full-time teachers in those roles. And while the, we may be able to manage that in terms of the class sizes, it creates a scheduling challenge. So that's my understanding of the, the request for the additional UA, or that's really to make certain existing Unified Arts positions full-time, as opposed to adding new ones. Okay, the next slide is the middle school slide, and Jim...
So just clarity for that, so at each elementary school, the Unified Arts, the art, the music, and the gym teacher?
Um, I don't know everything that they consider Unified Arts, but typically, music, art, for sure, is in there, PE. Am I missing something?
Library.
Library, you call, okay, well, this is not referring to library. I think typically in these schools, it's the art teacher, but the part of the request was not to say it has to be art, let them.
Got it. But currently, at the elementary school level, those teachers in Unified Arts are full-time? Are FTEs?
Some positions in some schools are not 1.0 FTE.
Thanks.
What this, what this has us doing oftentimes is creating a schedule that is based solely around Unified Arts schedule instead of letting the, the schedule work itself.
Okay, thanks for the clarification. Sorry.
That's a good question.
Yes, Commissioner Carey.
I have a question about the BCBA. So we don't have any BCBA's now in the district?
Not currently.
And what board certi, what board are they certified by?
So it's a national, it's a national registration that you do have to get qualified to, to do this for. It is a specific behaviorist position, so yeah, there's a national board that they do go to.
Right, and you defined a lot of roles that they, they fulfill in each size school, including direct services to students.
This, this would be, at, at our level on a day-to-day basis, this would be the first level of triage that we would plug them into, is the direct service to support students at this point. All of the other, all of the other aspects of the position are things that they would be able to work themselves into. And what a BCBA or board certified behavior analyst does in the day-to-day in terms of supervising parent educators and making sure that they have the correct level of training is part of what their day-to-day role is. But if we were to plug somebody in tomorrow, their, their first thing would be to, to go directly to helping to manage crisis-level behavior so that we can get kids to stabilize.
Thank you.
Commissioner Curry?
I don't need an answer now, but down the road, when numbers get put to these items, I need to understand the role of the school psychologist compared to that, and to make sure there's not duplication.
Sure. Yeah, I could speak to that a little bit. So right now, our school psychologist, at Champlain anyway, I can say that our school psychologist is locked into doing a lot of the testing and is not doing a lot of the direct service with students. And so that, that particular item is, we're not getting our, our most skillful people to.
Right, but you mentioned a lot of assessment work. So I would just want to make sure that's, like, why are we adding more staff to do more assessments if the psychologists are for that?
Yeah, this is for specific, FBA's of functional behavior assessment is part of the repertoire of a BCBA, but that developing of an operational behavior plan, something that a student would travel with, that the teacher would be working with the student with, is something that a skillful BCBA is looking at, is their, that's, that's one of their main functions.
Thank you. Commissioner Goach?
Did I, Joe, did I hear you say four BCBA's?
Yeah, so one of the BCBA positions is geared specifically towards the preschool.
Okay.
And then three split amongst the elementary schools.
Gotcha, thanks. So Commissioner Pillsbury, and then Carey since you've spoken.
I don't know what the position was. We have a, there's a name that's been mentioned several times here, Josh Meyer, I think he's a restorative justice, positive behavior coach.
Right.
Where does he fit in with these board certified behavior analysis?
So what Josh's role is currently in, in terms of what I, how I am utilizing Josh is as a system-wide analyst of how things are going in terms of how we're implementing restorative practices and positive behavior intervention services. So he's looking at things from kind of like the, the 30,000-foot view in terms of how, what are we doing on a day-to-day basis, school-wide, right? This is somebody who is geared directly towards triaging with students one-to-one. The grain size gets way smaller when you get down to the BCBA position. And Josh is excellent, by the way. We're happy to have him too.
I just need to meet him so I know what he does.
Commissioner Carey?
Have him come in.
Just a quick question, Nate. You said these are urgent priorities.
Yes. Yeah, and so as we move along, obviously, we can do whatever you as a board decide to do. My suggestion for tonight would be that we try to, by and large, confine the questions to like clarification, make sure you understand what's coming out here, and then, just because there's a lot to get through here. And one idea that I had, I think is worth considering, is for the two December meetings, perhaps saying, okay, you know, the first meeting, we're going to deal with everything on the elementary slide and the preschool slide and a few others, and, and, you know, essentially like we parse it out a little bit so that we can be sure that we have the right resources and the expertise in the room to really go deep if there is an area you want to delve in on. And then also, again, today, you're not being asked to make any decisions, certainly not by us anyway, this is more just like, here's the beginning of the process, here's what to start thinking about, your decision lies, I don't know, about two months from now, but we want to give you time to start digesting this, and certainly if it makes sense to submit some questions or something, you know, that could be answered at a, at a future date, that's fine too. But I just think ultimately, we're going to want to kind of be measured in how deep we go into any one of these items in order to make sure that we can get through everything.
That being said, the, only four more slides are, pertain to our district leaders that are here tonight. So if we do have some clarifying questions, like when we do this alone, it, it's really difficult when they're not in the room. So let's take advantage of the next four slides have to do with the individuals in the room, and then when we get to curriculum, data, those individuals aren't here, and we could, you know, move quickly along those. But that was really helpful to dig in with Joe and to get that clarification because we don't know when we look to your guidance. And so thanks for following up with that. So thank you, Director Labrie, for explaining the goal tonight, but also, you know, if on the next four slides, we dig down a little, let's, let's do that. So thank you. All right. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Middle school.
Hi, welcome, Jim.
Hi, thank you very much for inviting me tonight. So I'm here to speak on behalf of both Edmunds and Hunt Middle School, and the principals of both schools have met repeatedly to kind of go over their priorities and to put together what you see on the slide there. And so my purpose tonight is kind of go through, again, it is in priority order from top to bottom, and so I'll go through and explain some of the rationales for each of those things. The first lineup there is for two FTE teachers for behavior programs, one in each school. Currently, you've heard some talk about some high-risk kids coming up from elementary school, and this is a big issue in the district in general. Curriculum for high-risk students is not adequate at this point, especially at the middle school level. Given the level of emotional behavioral needs, one teacher cannot sustain and demand, the demands students are currently in need of, more support. So both schools have programs where there's a special educator with a pull-out, well, it's really a, a program that supports kids as they push into regular classes. But what we're more and more seeing is that we really need to have something that's a little bit more self-contained, because the kids don't have the skills yet to really manage their core classes well. So they're detracting from others' education, they're eating up resources within the school. And what we really need is to have a situation where we can provide the core-level instruction in this more contained environment. The students then can be practicing more their social skills and behavioral skills as they go out to Unified Arts classes, which tend to not be as triggering for them because the demands are very different. And so you're kind of finding that balance. And then the goal would be then to start pushing them where they build their tolerance, remove the scaffolding, so they can, able to contain and, you know, work better and better within the regular programming. But we're finding that with the programs we have running right now at each school, it's not leading into the kids that are in those programs. And by providing one extra full-time teacher at each program, at each school, that would give us two full-time educators each of there, which would be able to provide that core teaching. And we've seen that the students who get that more small interventions and teaching, they do really well with that. And so we want to support that. The next item on there, and that would be for our tier-three kids, right, the kids on IEPs, and it'd be tier-three, tier-four kids on IEPs. The next level is the two full-time RP coordinators, one in each school. The RP initiative, and Josh was brought up today, I've been meeting with him, he is excellent, but for the, we've been our third year really implementing that at Hunt. We're seeing a lot of progress with that, we've been working really hard on the tier-one level. But what we need there is somebody to really be coordinating our efforts with our student support center people, so that as we're dealing with behaviors, we can start to, at the tier-one level, do a better job of, you know, working with them and giving them the skills that students need when they do find themselves in behavioral situations. But also, we need to be working towards our tier-two restorative part of the work. So the tier-one is really relational building and making sure you're improving the climate for students across... sure you're improving the, the climate for students across the building, um, and building community. And we're doing a lot of work on that. But then there's also the piece when a student does have a disciplinary issue is what do you do about actually restoring and repairing, um, the harms that get caused? And that's a lot to ask of a student support center person who's managing so many different pieces in terms of power school entries, regular processing of students when they come in. We do do restorative questions with them when they come in, but we need someone who has a higher level of training and, and planning, um, to be able to work with students and get a better result out of those. Because when you invest in those things, the results long-term are much more sustainable than when you just do more traditional consequences and you don't have the people power to kind of manage those things in a more higher level. So we are looking for that piece. Um, uh, let's see. And then the next piece on there is the point-five math interventionist for EMS. And that is that currently EMS cannot meet the need for their tier-two math support. Um, they have a need for thirteen sections of interpatient support, but only eight contractual sections are within their capacity at the moment. So they actually need another person to fulfill that. Um, the other piece on there is, um, the money for an academic summer school. You know, the district, one of its goals is closing the achievement gap. And what we're seeing is that unless you're putting in extra time, there's a lot of loss of, uh, learning over the summer. And really, the, the other piece is that it's going to take more time learning and be, supporting learners in order to close achievement gap because the gap started age-two. Um, so before even kids get to preschool or kindergarten, they're behind. And if we're not working really hard, um, you know, with the good work that the elementary schools are doing and continuing that work as we move forward, we're not going to be able to close the achievement gap. So we really need to increase our tier-one instruction and, and work on our school climates. But then we also need to actually increase the amount of time that we're working with students to get them caught up. Uh, the next line on there is the, uh, two full-time equivalent social workers. Um, that's needed, a lot of that would be needed to support those, um, more inclusive programs I was talking about at the top, right? So the students that are in RJAG's program and the, um, the program that's at, uh, Edmonds, I don't remember the name of it right now, but give that, giving that, gives that extra support that we really want to make more of a, um, inclusive situation where we're doing the in-house, um, teaching of the content around core subjects. Um, they have a lot of needs that go beyond. They have a lot of social, emotional needs, there's needs to support families, and, uh, the social worker, uh, in the schools for each school would be super helpful in that way. Um, because then you could really make sure you're giving those kids a full wraparound service that they need. Because you're not just working with students, you are working with families. And when you get the adults at home and the adults at school rowing in the same direction, you make a lot of progress and it takes a lot of support. Uh, the next line on there is, um, the, uh, field trips, money for, uh, for Hunt. Uh, we're putting it in there, it's, it's not the, it's by far not our top priority, but given our location in the city, unlike Edmonds, we can't walk down to the Flynn, we can't walk down to access so many of the wonderful resources downtown. And buses are very expensive. And so in terms of equity, it would be nice to have some extra money for us to make that easier for our students to access some of those really wonderful resources downtown. Um, so that's our final ask.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much, Jim.
I don't know if there's any questions.
We'll go, yep, we'll, Director Labrie will ask around, is that all right?
Yeah, go ahead. It's up to you.
Commissioner Wick?
Oh, yeah, just a simple question. Uh, two social workers, one in each school, how many do we presently have at each school?
So I, I think Edmonds has one. Um, we currently have two. And we actually do have one of them that is dedicated to our JAG's program to support that. Um, but as you know, around the city also, the, the needs at Hunt are actually greater, uh, right now in terms of, if you look at demographics, in terms of some of the students and number of IEPs and, and so forth. So right now, I believe there's one at Edmonds and we have two at, at Hunt.
Anyone else?
No, that was, my question was that same one.
Any other questions? And currently, the, I know that we know, uh, summer school, the offering is great for our, um, middle schoolers, but for, this is an academic summer school that would happen at Hunt or at Edmonds, or it's to be in the works that we would, the district would run, that would manage?
That's my understanding, yeah.
Okay.
And the academic piece is what's really important about that is to help kids catching up with their reading and writing, their math.
And I know that this summer, this past summer, they were displaced because of the construction at Hunt, but it is an incredibly valuable summer program at Hunt, um, over the past years that, um, BHS teachers as well teach there throughout the summer. Um, and I know that, that is valued, um, within that community. Commissioner Curry and then Alwale?
Thanks. So, um, not really a question for you, Jim, but thank you very much for this presentation, for, um, the administration and for discussion purposes when we get to numbers. Um, I'm hearing a lot of social work and behavioral support needs. And so my question is, what alternatives have we explored in, like in contracting with community partners to provide staffing instead of, um, I mean, every time we add a position to our budget, we increase the baseline. And then that gets compounded annually with, um, inflationary cost increases. So I'm just trying to understand from the administration, you know, when we do have these conversations about all of this behavior and social work support, is this really the only option that we have to hire positions in-house in this way? Or can you bring us, um, a presentation or a discussion of some alternatives? What other districts do? Could we share? Just like, you know, some other ideas. Thanks.
One quick answer to that, just as a piece of it, is that we do, what we do is we have partnerships with a number of counselors that we provide the housing and they provide the services for so many slots per week. So we're, we are working with partnerships, but as you're hearing across, you know, the different levels, um, the needs, the social needs, the emotional needs, the trauma we have in our district are very high. And so that has a huge impact on school climate. Uh, one ask, one other piece, I'll just say in terms of the summer school, right now, it's, uh, you need to be on an IEP. So what we would be trying to do is make it not exclusive to people on, in special ed to be a part of summer school. So try to expand that. Am I correct in that?
I have another question about that. Yep, follow-up.
Um, is summer school required or provided by most districts in the state? The reason I'm asking is because have we asked the city to pay for this cost?
I have no idea what, uh, is going on in other districts, but I'll say there's different, we offer different types of summer programming. And so, um, and the city, we have an arrangement where the city pays for some of the recreational components of some of the programming that we offer through extended learning, which includes some of the summer, summer programming. My understanding of the, what's particular about this budgetary request is we're talking about academic summer school, right? Not just summer programming that, again, that we offer like through our, um, extended learning division, but also as, um, as Jim said, separate from the summer school that we offer specifically to, uh, in accordance with student IEPs. Um, so that's, that's like where this kind of fits into that, um, that range of offerings, if that makes sense.
But, uh, we, we, we have in the past few years had the conversation, um, through the pot of fund conversation in terms of supporting summer school unsuccessfully. Um, and I know Nora wants to talk about summer school a little bit, give some more information on that. But that, that was an idea a couple of years ago when we were talking about how can the city partner with us and support. Summer school was, uh, one of the items that we put on, but unsuccessfully, we were not able to, um, get those funds.
Currently, the summer programs that we offer are for students who have demonstrated regression and have IEPs for special ed. So that's a pretty narrow scope. Um, we don't serve, uh, we don't serve a lot of the kids who might benefit from summer programs. Um, so, uh, all school districts have, uh, the requirement to serve those students. It is, um, it is not a high standard. So this is, this would be a, would be open to more people, more people would benefit.
Thank you. So Commissioner Alwale, I'm going to go.
I just had a question about the restorative practices.
Yes, what's your question?
Do you, do you not see, since we've been doing this at grade schools, that, that as they come up into the middle school, having been doing this for four years now almost, I think, haven't we? Or three, maybe, I don't know. Do you not see that the kids are coming where you don't?
Commissioner Alwale, one minute, I, have we, we haven't implemented?
Yeah, no, the-
At the grade schools?
Yeah, no, well, yeah, the, we've been doing restorative practice for a while, but systemically, we haven't had a clear approach. That we've just hired Josh this summer to kind of consolidate. So you have pockets that are working, but we don't have-
Okay, I thought we were doing it in all schools, at grade school level.
So like, so I, I wouldn't be able to say that all our staff have had training and had supports and everyone, every school is implementing at the full level. We're trying to get to that because we know that that will help reduce some of the behavior pieces, but also helps the teachers with their management and, and things. So it's hopefully a sandwich approach in terms of addressing. And, um, I do think, uh, Commissioner Curry has some points in terms of looking at different strategies to address it. And I know our administrators are doing that though, and they're, and they're partnering and, and thinking about that. But there might be an opportunity at some point, because if you look, when you look at these slides, if you look through this, there is a theme in terms of, uh, social, emotional behavior that, uh, all administrators are saying, that's a challenge for us, it's a challenge for us. So, um, you know, so right now, this is the best strategy we have, but there might be a bigger conversation down the road in terms of maybe changing the orientation as well.
I mean, I would say that the, um, support of the district and its emphasis on RP has been incredibly helpful to Hunt Middle School. Um, you know, we started with, you know, really implementing tier-one at a very high level. We started with our, uh, faculty three years ago because we wanted to work from our adults down. And so they wanted them experience circles, experience what that was for a year. Then we started continuing that. In our second year, we were implementing circles with our students once a week. This is our third year. Um, so we're continuing to work with our adults and there's been a lot of great professional development throughout the district, uh, on that, um, as well as the RP collaborative that meets periodically throughout the year. And then this year, our school in particular, has been expanding beyond the circles to bring the tier-one practices into everything. Uh, we have our teachers making goals, uh, at the team level, daily goals, uh, weekly goals and quarterly goals that support, um, our continuous improvement goal in RP. And it's one of our goals at our school is to improve school safety. And so we've started, we actually gave a climate survey last week. That's our, one that we created, uh, in addition to the one that the district did two years ago. So we can do that three times a year and actually watch progress as we're doing the work. And we're working towards, uh, learning more about tier-two practices this year. Um, contact with Josh who has been instrumental in, in trying to help us reach out to other schools. Um, we're trying to bring in affinity groups, uh, to work with different, um, Rachel groups and so forth, other schools. So Josh has been instrumental there, looking at CDO. So the work with the RP has been really, really helpful. I think schools are in different places as they implement, as often happens, um, but it's been incredibly helpful. And I think it has a lot of potential as we go forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Vaj.
Uh, I know you said this wasn't high on your priority list, but I do like to see that you requested some money for HMS field trips because I do see that it's an inequitable issue. Like, uh, Edmonds Middle School, they can walk two blocks and get to this, uh, Flynn. Um, I just heard Matty talk about this at the PTO meeting last week. Um, and in years past, I think someone at Edmonds had organized community involvement, um, volunteering for Edmonds kids. But Hunt kids, uh, can't participate in that. And in the spring, we, uh, saw the Edmonds kids walk out in a protest, uh, Black Lives Matter protest. Now, if Hunt kids would want to do the same thing, they could do that, but who's going to notice, you know?
We've had a few out on North Avenue, it's not the same effect.
So I just wanted to point that out to people. And I know, um, I guess in some, to some people, it feels like Hunt is kind of out in the boondocks. Um, but Hunt's been around for many years, so I don't know how this has been dealt with in the past.
Thank you.
Great. I think, thank you. Thank you very much, Jim.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, now we've got, uh, Principal Noel Green to talk about the high school.
Hi, welcome, Noel.
Good evening, thank you. So I first wanted to start by saying it's almost a little, a bit embarrassing to speak from the high school perspective. Speaking of the things that we've received recently, including the, uh, bond for our reconstruction of the building. Um, and there are so many needs district-wide, which is why it's so important for us to work together as a district and a system. And I'll go back actually to the middle school slide in regard to the request for the summer school because that tremendously benefits us. Because one of the problems that we see is students that have arrived at the high school level, um, in some ways ill-prepared. So having that transition, so hopefully, the summer school would include, uh, finishing students, eighth graders, who would have an opportunity to remediate before they arrive at the high school. I don't know if you know, but we have five different entry-level, uh, math courses, many of which are remedial at the high school level. The goal would be eventually for us to just be able to start at the algebra one level instead of elements of math or cons-, or concepts of algebra. So I completely support that. Um, so what you'll see in our budget for the high school is not a request for numerous teachers because, again, looking at the needs of the district, we thought it was best to try to offset some of those, some of that spending to support the work that happens before students arrive at the high school. So I'll jump down a couple of, of bullet points to remain consistent with the concerns expressed around social, emotional support. So again, you will see our request to have an additional, uh, social worker. Right now, we currently have, uh, a 1.6, and I'll explain that in a second. But the need for the high school to have, uh, two is important based on those needs expressed by the other principals and myself. And, uh, in order to calibrate this effectively, our school is two and a half times the size of each of the middle schools. We have the same number of social workers. So obviously, we need that additional support based on our sheer size. Um, so when we look, uh, the 1.6 explanation, um, is a little bit difficult for BHS because that 0.6 is a staff member that is contracted through the Howard Center and has a very limited caseload, different than the 1.0 FTE, the other social worker who has an unlimited caseload. So that's why we feel the need to make some sort of strategy adjustment to have two 1.0 social workers. So in terms of instruction, if we go back to the top of the list, we'll see, um, computer science teacher. BHS currently does not have a computer science program, which we need a computer science program. We were able to, uh, have some offerings this year because we were able to work with BTC to have one of their teachers teach two courses for ninth graders, introduction to computer programming that fit the BHS schedule. So those students are allowed to, are able to take those courses, uh, as part of their regular schedule and not have it interrupt their regular school schedule. But in terms of the, the richness and the robust nature of computer science programs that I've seen in other schools, we are at a deficit because we, we don't have an instructor. So that is why we prioritize that. Um, if we skip down to, uh, bullet number three in regard to our counseling department, the school has made tremendous strides in the last couple of years to increase the capacity of the counseling apartment. One of the ways in which we did that was by hiring a very dynamic, um, uh, new director of school counseling. Hopefully, some of you have met Meg Huckhart. She's amazing and has done wonders in regard to rebuilding the, the counseling department at our school. Uh, one way in which to continue that improvement would be to make whole one of the counselors who's currently 0.8 historically. And I, and as I explain this, um, the theme that you'll see and what we're asking for is that for some reason, historically, BHS has hosted numerous part-time positions. And in any well-run institutional organization, the systems in place, the support systems, need to be well-maintained, they need to be well-organized, and they need to be whole. It is hard to exist with part-time positions in such support roles. So you'll see a, an ongoing theme. In the guidance department, we're asking for 0.2 to make Tony settle, who is the current EL Guidance Counsel, to be full-time. Three years ago, we had two, uh, counselors who were 0.8. Um, and that was an equity issue. We made moves to change that, which made us go down to one. But if your letter of your alphabet just happened to be, let's say, A through D, for example, your student would have one day less of service per week because of that allocation. So we feel the need to, uh, bolster that to 1.0. One of the things is that we're having a, a, a strong philosophical shift in regard to our counseling services so that we are accounting for the needs of, uh, all students regardless of their college track or whether on the other end of that spectrum. We expect that our counselors are supporting students, um, in their needs just as strongly as if they were, uh, applying to colleges. Our students on the other end who are struggling with, uh, courses or depression or other things that create barriers to their engaging their coursework. Furthering that, if you look, we have a current 0.5 or halftime Edmond's assistant in the guidance department. So we're asking to make that position whole again to strengthen our systems. Um, also, if you go further down, we have a 0.8 social studies teacher. So for the purpose of us, uh, adding more elective courses to our schedule by adding that 0.2 to make that teacher whole, that's another- by adding that .2 to make that teacher whole, that's another request. And also again, our athletics program could be even more dynamic if the assistant athletic position was full-time, that's another request. So as you see, this theme is we need our systems to be intact and full and whole. The last part of that would be additional funding for athletics training services as part of the athletics department. And also too, each year, there is a chance that there might be fluctuations in numbers of athletic teams. You never know, one-year basketball might be popular. And we need to have an allocation in the budget to account for emerging sports or adjustments in current sports and adjustments to the coaching staff so that they could support those teams. So if you can see the theme in regard to BHS, it is supporting the work of the elementary and middle schools so that our high school students, when they arrive in ninth grade, are better prepared. Our goals are to make our systems whole and intact so that we can further the work of the high school. And our last goal is to ensure that our students in the 21st century have a computer science program.
Great. Thank you Noel. Any questions at this time or comments from board members? Commissioner Curry.
Can I just ask if the, if the current athletic coaches are on a graduated pay scale?
They are.
They are? Okay.
Yes, they are on a pay scale. However, that is, I just talked with Nate about that the other, just today actually, in that we're looking to perhaps increase that as part of the contract because those salaries are through the contract, BHS teacher contract.
Commissioner Avant, check in on Alma.
I have a question about your guidance department. So it looks like you have a halftime admin assistant there.
Yes.
How many guidance counselors do you have and what does the admin assistant do?
So we have five guidance counselors, including the director of guidance. So she also has a caseload. Tony Settle is the guidance counselor for EL, so he's currently a .8. The administrative assistant supports the work of the registrar, who's also part of the guidance department with the college process, Naviance, supporting students that come into the guidance department and other office projects. So it is a position that is extremely important in terms of the administrative runnings of the guidance department.
So he's scheduling the guidance counselor's time?
Yes, that's one of their roles, and they also help with major events. For example, we have college fairs, information nights. They are all, they are part of that planning process.
And you have five guidance counselors, but it's 4.8 FTEs, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Alma, yeah?
I just wanted to know, the .5 FTE athletic assistant, is this like?
So currently, we have.
I mean, I'm trying, well, I was trying to think. I wanted to say secretary, but that's a no-no anymore. But I couldn't remember the term.
Right. So we currently have a director of athletics. And we have a part-time person that assists the athletics director. And they do a lot of, for example, scheduling of athletic events, transportation, field setup. That needs to be a full-time position because just in terms of updating and keeping track of the athletics website is a job on its own, and that all falls upon that person.
Did we not used to have a full-time assistant? I thought we did. From back when my kids were here, I thought we did. Did that get cut?
We haven't had a.
No, I think sometimes we get confused with a single body, but their allocation might be different, right? Because we have a person who's an assistant, but Noel's asking for an increase. You might see a body around, but that person.
It hasn't been full-time since my kids were in the high school.
Really? Well, it used to be.
I'm just curious about the practice of segregating the EL kids under one guidance counselor as opposed to training all the guidance counselors. Is that considered best practice? And was that designed in consultation with our EL director?
It was. And it, I wouldn't say it was best practice. It was best practice in this particular situation because of the skill set of the person that took the role. The skill set of that person came in having been a director of guidance at Wood New Ski High School and had made tremendous relationships with numerous students and worked well within that community. And the network that he created made sense for that role to, or that position to take, for the person to take on that role, supporting the EL. Very familiar with EL law, very familiar with EL structures and culture. So it made sense. It's not a structure that we necessarily would have had if that person didn't have that skill set.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you Noel, and thank you for your presentation tonight. And any follow-up questions if we have them, we'll be in touch, but thank you.
Thank you.
Laura, do you want to speak briefly to the student support services budget ideas before you head out?
Cold, I'm not going anywhere. So we're, we're looking at a few requests for enhancements as well. As you know, On Top and Horizons is currently served by one administrator. They're separated by 1.4 miles, which doesn't sound like far. And honestly, when I first started this role, I didn't think it was a really big deal. But we know that On Top struggled with some leadership issues last year. And we know that behaviors are everywhere going, are escalating. Behaviors are challenging in all of our schools. On Top is no exception. And On Top is a program where we put kids who have emotional disturbance. So you might imagine administrative support there is important. And so my proposal is that, and I believe is supported by, by, I know it's supported by the On Top and Horizon Director, Bobby Riley, that we increase by 1.5, by a .5 FTE administrator to support the Horizon program and that the current full 1.0 administrator be placed at On Top. We also have requests for mental health specialists at On Top to help children who, rather than having that be a place where we just warehouse kids with disabilities, that struggle with emotional and social context, that we really make some headway with those, with supporting them and providing a therapeutic placement, which could potentially allow us to keep a couple more kids within district, especially if at some point we can expand. But that's, that's another discussion down the road. But we need to do a better job first. Also, we are requesting two FTE behavior specialists, one per middle school. And that's not in addition, but is my support of that request from them. And then $20,000 in PD funds for trauma training for next year. As you know, we have the trauma, the training strands, the three-year training strands that we've been looking at, the trauma training to be wedded with multi-tier support systems training to help us work with kids with challenges.
Thank you. One clarifying question. So the two FTE behavior specialists, one for middle school. When we look at the middle school slide, it says two FTE teachers for behavior programs. Separate?
Yeah, those are two different, different, I think they may have been confused. But as I understood, that's two different. So the request that Jim mentioned is specifically for their behavior programs.
So like the planning room, you're, you're looking at the middle school for?
So there's two different things. One would be support those JAGS-type program that need school, which is supporting kids to kind of create a more pull-out model to support them and then have them push in for UA. So there's, that's a, that's a full-time teacher, right? In terms of supporting the student support center, that's not a teacher position. That would be more like this position, behavior specialist position. We'd be able to work on supporting the RP, supporting, you know, helping kids reintegrate back into the classrooms and stuff.
Thank you for clarifying that. Any other questions for student support? Commissioner Alma.
Why are we not putting in the middle schools the same, whatever these people were that you're putting in at the grade school level that are, you know, qualified to really? BCA. Board-certified.
So the request for, I can say for On Top, the request for mental health was intentionally left broad because we are mindful of the fact that finding somebody with that kind of training might be challenging. It might look like, it might be a social worker, it might, but it, or it might be social group training. Is that the one you meant, the On Top one, or you mean the middle schools?
No, she's talking about the elementary BCA.
No, yeah. Why are we not putting those at the middle school level?
I think you need to speak to that, yeah?
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't part of, you know, the conversation about why we would choose the board-certified or not. I mean, certainly you want the most qualified people. I don't think we would be upset if we could get board-certified, but I think we understand that that's not always possible. And so having a behavior specialist who has a certain higher level of training beyond normal para to be able to FBA, to be able to, you know, help behavior plans and then doing RP work would be sufficient. And if we could get that more qualified person, that would be fantastic, but.
One of the challenges, I guess, you know, from my perspective, giving our schools the flexibility helps because even when we do give allocations, a great example would be last year, we allocated paras to each school to give support. But they still haven't been able to fill them. Even though the allocation is there, they can't find the right bodies. So if we're going to put a label on it and say, you must have this, then it gives them less flexibility to, to try to find at least someone who can support, right? So more flexibility is better, I think.
Thank you. Thank you Laura. All right. Commissioner Curry.
The $20,000 for trauma training, would that fall under the same one we just talked about that would be paid by Medicaid? Or is that different, and then so why?
My understanding, this request is a, is a local funding request, is the same, this is something that... The PD strand that we're doing this year, I believe, is locally funded. Is that, and Stephanie Phillips is, is in charge of that for LACO. She's organizing it. It's my task to organize the training next year, which is why it's on my slide. And I believe it's locally, would be, expect that to be locally funded.
But why couldn't it be part of that Medicaid-funded type of training?
I think that's worth exploring. We have funds that are available, so I mean, certainly we could explore that if it's, if it's applicable. I have no objection.
Right. Thank you, Commissioner Curry. All right. Thank you Laura. Noel, Principal Green?
Sorry, I just forgot to mention one thing. I'm not sure how many of the board members are aware that we've, BHS has created a partnership with, or strengthened our partnership with CCV in that instead of our students using dual enrollment vouchers to go there, we actually have CCV classes being taught here on campus at BHS, which is huge for us in terms of equity. Students who had transportation issues or other issues are able to just walk down the hall and take college-level courses here at the school. This past semester, we've had, we have a Intro to Sign Language course, which has been amazingly popular. And we also have an Intro to Business course. The reason why I bring this up is because I didn't have it on a slide, but I think I might try to slide it in, is that we might need some flexibility moving forward because there are sometimes some additional program and supply costs that we will incur by having the instructors come. We, as best we can, we have, we try to support the facilities or tech needs that the professors need when they come to the campus. But based on, this being based on a student need, we may not necessarily know exactly what we need year to year. So we might need some flexibility when we get to the course registration time. So I just wanted to put that out there for everyone to know. This coming up semester, we are going to have an additional two or three more courses that will be taught here at BHS.
Commissioner Walts.
Did you say semester?
Semester.
Because that's like a magic word tonight.
Yes, yes. Semester-long courses.
Commissioner Curry.
So what I picked up from there is the risk that by not losing the vouchers, which is paid by the state, we absorb a cost. But I'm one, is that true? Like, we might have to pay some supply costs?
Yeah, supply costs. Yeah, the vouchers are still in place. Students use their vouchers to pay for the courses for 11th and 12th grade.
What I'm wondering is, because this model saves the state money, could the administration please go through a process of letting AOE know that we absorb additional costs, which are offset, which save them money? And I think it would be like a formal waiver request for the state to pay those costs. And could we have a copy of that request in writing? I mean, for me, I'm not going to support that in the budget unless I see a formal request in writing to the state for a waiver to ask them to support it.
Yes.
They might have to go to the legislature, but I'd like it if we get the documentation on that. Because then I think it could actually, you know, initiate statewide an opportunity. The same thing could happen in Johnson and other districts. Thanks.
Thank you.
Who can the board thank for that brainchild? Because that has been a long time coming and for someone to actually make it work and for all the students that were not able to participate in dual enrollment and to see them working in these two courses, and the opportunity was fantastic.
Thanks.
That's you. Thank you.
Can I move?
Yeah.
To maybe contemplate?
We have Miriam next.
I know. And I want to hear from Miriam, but contemplate doing the rest of the slideshow next time? Because we're only about a third of the way through.
Okay.
Okay. Yep, noted.
So Miriam, I agree.
How many of us are leaving?
Miriam, welcome.
Sorry, just consulting with Principal.
All right. Welcome.
Thank you. I was actually consulting with Principal Green about the first item on my list, which I gave you a little preview of when I was here last week. We both feel very strongly that we can do a more, a more thorough job of helping students who enter at all different levels of proficiency in both English and in math to do, to be more successful if we have the support of a dedicated math teacher for English learners beyond what we're already able to do with the part-time help of Kevin Cross. So that's the first item on the list. The second item on the list is an academic language coach for the secondary level to match the academic language coach we're presently deploying at the elementary level. The 1.0 position would be split, I'm not sure it would be 50/50, but proportionally between the two middle schools and the high school. And if you'd like more detail about what the academic language coach position is all about, I'd be glad to provide it. We have one who's in her second year now at the elementary level, and this is a plan just to expand that to the secondary level. It was a request from last year's budget that didn't make it. The next is, we have a program assistant presently who works with Parent University. The world of Parent University is shifting a little bit. It's not at all certain which district personnel will be able to devote which parts of their time to Parent University next year. However, we are pleased enough with the results so far and also absolutely determined to keep this valuable source of support moving forward for the community. So making sure that we have an assistant director who can help fulfill that vision is a, is an important thing. This idea came from, the next idea came from a meeting that I had with some parents, which Nathan attended and which was supported by our multilingual liaisons. And we were talking about how we might be able to help students at the beginning of their journey towards achieving full proficiency in English, not only to learn more English, but to make that sociocultural adjustment that they have to make experiencing schools in the, school in the United States for the first time and fully engaging with school. And a comment was made that during the summer school that we run here at BHS every summer, we use multilingual liaisons in a very different way than we use them during the school year. During the school year, they actually respond to about 500 tickets a month just for home-school contact. That includes calls home because a child's sick, calls home because a form needs to be filled out, parent-teacher conferences and the like. We are not able to use them instructionally at all. And yet during the summer, they act as instructional support to students using both their native languages and English. And their support is academic in nature as well as, I guess I would say, social and emotional, helping students attend, stay focused, and understand what's appropriate behavior or engagement in what for many is their first or near their first experience in a traditional American classroom. in what for many is their first or near their first experience in a traditional American classroom. So the idea was raised at this parent meeting, why couldn't we do that? And I'll tell you the truth, I went to the, um, the conversation that directors had with principals and said, "Do you think we could maybe get one person to do that?" And they said, "That's ridiculous. Which language are you gonna choose for one? How could you possibly prioritize this language group over that language group? We feel strongly enough about the potential of this idea that we would like you to increase it to three." So I believe you asked me last week if I ever consult with principals. Yes, I do. So that, the result is the 3.0 FTE. That would allow us to address Swahili-speaking students who are our growth area right now and who are coming in, by and large, with very limited formal education prior to arriving in the U.S. and who really need that support. Also Nepali-speaking students who are still a large number, although we're not really taking on much in the way of new students from that population. There still are students, particularly at both middle schools and at the high school, who need that support. And then finally, we would address the needs of Mymy-speaking and Somali-speaking students if we were to get those three FTEs. And we imagine them as full paraeducators, not as multilingual liaisons. They would have a different role, instructional in nature. And this is a model that Portland, Maine uses and lots of other places use, and I can tell you more about it if you're interested. And then finally, I think I mentioned, have mentioned to you before that we are, um, in a, uh, what is so far a pretty successful experiment here at Burlington High School to bring EL teachers and content teachers together to do co-teaching. We're doing that in the areas of math, um, science, although it's a slightly different model, humanities for ninth grade, Intro to Health, and Social Studies. So if 10 people involved in that cohort, I would like to double that cohort if possible. Maybe even go a little further. Again, I'd like to spread the idea to the middle schools and to engage more content-area teachers at the high school in learning from their colleagues how to be comfortable and effective as teachers of English learners. So that's what the last item is about. It's to provide professional development and to enlist their support by means of stipending them for work done beyond the school day.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Any questions? Well explained. Thank you, Miriam. Thanks for being here later. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so at the request of Commissioner Gulick, talked about, um, you know, briefly going through or, or tabling some of the slides, but getting to Director Lavery, some of the key dates and potentially having board members look at these slides on their own. Unless Z wants to speak to Human Resources, or if there are other slides, Director Lavery, that you wanna give a, you know, bring to our attention that would provide more information than, than that's on the slide.
Um, yeah, I mean, there are those slides, but if folks feel more comfortable just reading them, that's fine. We can skip ahead beyond it. I hope that most of it is comprehensible, just from what's on the slide. That was the intent of it. So, um, if anyone has a question here, if you've, if you've been reading ahead and you wanna say, "What does this mean?", um, I'm happy to address that now, to the extent that I can. Otherwise, we could kind of skip beyond all of the next slides here, and you could, you could have that as your homework.
Great. And then go to the fund balance slide, option for expenditure. Do you wanna talk about that and then...
Yep, so, um, so the good news is, uh, the, the, we're, we have one, kind of like a little minor process, but our audit, our FY19 audit is virtually complete at this point. And, uh, while there's a lot that goes into that, the kind of most important piece for budgeting again is this, how you choose to use the fund balance surplus. So folks will remember last year, we had this conversation again. We were kind of right in that $1.4 million range, and we're right in that range again this year. So there's a couple options that you have. Again, there's law that governs how this money can be used. And essentially, uh, in the absence of going to the voters, the money is treated as revenue in the budget year that we're building right now. So our fiscal year 19 fund balance surplus is treated as revenue for our fiscal year '21 budget, the budget we're building right now. What does that mean when you treat it as revenue? Well, it means, hey, if you're gonna spend, you know, say, $90 million, instead of needing to find $90 million through a combination of whatever grants and other things, and then your taxes, you only need to find $89 million because you've, or, you know, $88.5 million because you've got, uh, your fund balance surplus from the prior year. So that's kind of the default way that this money is treated by state law. But it also, you know, you're also allowed to do other things with it, provided that you go to the voters. And in particular, for example, one of the things that's clearly envisioned by the law is establishment of a capital reserve fund. So there are other districts in the state that have a fund of this nature, and they deposit surplus monies into it. And they can kind of, you know, you can deposit as much as you want into it. But the point is, you have to go to the voters to establish it, once established. My understanding, and I triply confirmed this before we did it, but, uh, once it's established by the voters, you don't need to go to the voters every time you want to use the money. But in any event, um, the, so the advantage there is, of course, you can set aside some money for particular projects or other, uh, things that, that you identify in, uh, creating your reserve fund. The disadvantage is that's money that you don't have to spend on your ongoing kind of operational needs in the coming year. And so that means you're either not increasing your budget by that $1.5 million, uh, you know, making more choices of taking things off your, your list, or you're increasing the taxes by that much more. So those are the options. Again, you don't have to make a decision on this, but it's something that, um, hopefully you'll be able to spend a little time thinking about. In previous years, we've brought this up, and again, the, the approach has been to just roll it into the next budget year, which makes a lot of sense for some of the advantages that we've talked about. But it also puts us in that position of if we find ourselves with less of a surplus than this, you're gonna face what's kind of, uh, often called a fiscal cliff, where all of a sudden, it's as though your budget was just cut because you don't have leftover money from the prior year that you're using to prop it up. So those are the options. We can go into more detail if, uh, if that's desirable. I know that it's something that, um, again, is, we've talked about in general sense, but I don't know if we've ever really deeply invested in the idea of a capital reserve. But, um, you know, I think I would encourage you to consider it. How's that?
Thank you. Commissioner Sowers?
Good question. Is that an either/or, or can you put like a million dollars in?
You can do, yeah, you can do it. You could set up a capital reserve and put nothing in it, right? But you do have to set it up.
Commissioner Gulick, then, Wick.
Actually, that was my question.
Thank you. Commissioner Wick?
Yeah, Nathan, remind me what we chose to do almost a year ago with our 1.0.
So la, so last year, we essentially just treated it as revenue again. And, um, if you go back and look at some of the slides, or probably the last one that's up there, the kind of summary slide, I think actually we did a little slide that showed the difference in, um, kind of what the budget would be with or without the application of the, the surplus.
Yes, but if memory serves, didn't we create, without having to go to the voters, some kind of line item like an operating contingency fund?
Yes, we have, so we have a contingency that's within our operating budget. So every year, it's like, okay, we're budgeting this much money. We don't, pretty much what we're saying is, we don't know exactly how it will be used, what things will come up that the board will identify are necessary, or things that we can't control, things that we discover. That's kind of like built into our annual operating budget. A reserve here is, you're building, you're setting aside money that's gonna build up over time, and you're using it consistent with however you, you know, construct the reserve. But you're using it periodically when the board deems it appropriate to, to use those funds.
Okay. Great, thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Curry?
I, I think what's hard for me to, um, digest about just taking this and reading it is I don't have a sense of what's kind of essential and what's nice to have. Like, do we need two drivers? Are we like, I don't need an answer right now, but I'm just...
From Marty, for example, Property Services?
Yeah, like, I mean, just there's no rationale for these requests. So is it possible to put a memo together?
Yeah, I mean, part, that, the intent of sharing this was to make sure people understood what the requests were at a, at a basic level. And then for, the idea being that over the December meetings, we could drill into those and you could, whichever questions you have could be answered, and we would, yeah...
Right, but we had like a rationale from all those schools. I'm just saying for the remainder, if we stop the presentation, not that I don't agree with you, I want to, but could we get like some kind of rationale? So that we enter that meeting with more context away we had...
Can't we just continue like devote 30 minutes next time around to the rest of the slides?
I'm thinking what Liz is, Commissioner Curry is suggesting is we can, out of those departments, curriculum, data, safety and inclusion of IT and facilities, we can reach out to those direct, direct heads. I can do that and ask them to...
No, we'll, we'll do it. I, I mean, I don't think that it's any trouble, kind of along lines with what you just said, to just write a few sentences so you understand kind of like where it's coming from.
Yep, yep, thanks.
Thank you. Great. Anything else? So let's look at the dates, and everybody lock in those dates that we look towards for December. And it's, I think, three more meetings to talk about budget. Um, we have the 12th, the 17th, and the 14th. And then with, yes, uh, no, the 12th, excuse me, the 10th, 10th of December, 17th of December, and then the 14th and 21st of January. So four more meetings, um, to review budgets. Great. Any questions about that schedule? Thank you for this presentation, Director Lavery, and, um, we look forward to the next, really, when we think of board work over the next, uh, the month of December and January, it's all about budget. Yep?
And I would say that, um, to Commissioner Gulick's, uh, point, we should probably try to dedicate the majority of the meeting time to have discussion, because you'll have lots of questions and you'll have a lot of opportunity. If we bring staff, we wanna, we want them to be here, so you can, so, and when we do the agenda plan, maybe think about that in terms of the, uh, timing and space.
That was said, okay. Next on the agenda, we can, before we talk to, and it's brief, the, the board governance was the superintendent search, initial steps. And, um, I had sent an email out, and I just have some handouts that I'll send to, distribute to everyone. And, um, Z, we can just open this opportunity, as I said, for any comments or questions. But we have, um, I have appointed Commissioner Sowers and Commissioner Gulick as the chairs of the Superintendent Search Committee. And the board officers will help, uh, over the next two weeks to set a framework and a timeline for that work. But at this time, I did wanna publicly open it up if anyone had any questions. And, uh, Commissioner Wick, do you mind helping me pass these out?
Yes, ma'am.
We're passing out, um, the samples that HR, Z had given us, along with some documentation. You received electronic copies of these.
Yep.
We just printed them out, uh, and samples of search firm, uh, Z, that you had done, search firm. And at this time, just in the use of time, is there any questions that anyone has or input?
What's the process for recommending somebody for the SAT, what is it called? The people who will be on the committee?
For hiring.
So the recommendations, at least one principal, at least, uh, members from diverse backgrounds, including those who may speak a first language, like people from the community. When, what's the process for us either nominating or recommending people for that?
So that is, we have a meeting this Thursday, so I will communicate via email, um, on those. You know, we haven't had those meetings yet, so we'll, we'll develop what that process is. Commissioner Pillsbury?
My, I, my one comment is that, um, if we have a committee, I would also like to know that the board, uh, has talked about the qualities of leadership that we would like this individual to have. And, uh, you know, you can get some input from staff and, uh, community forums, but I think it's important that, that when a person applies for the job, that they just don't show they can do the job description that we have. But also they, we, we have certain values in this community. We have certain, uh, ways that work for, for our community and leadership. And I think that we ought to decide what they are together, and we can be, have a consensus of what they are. And then in the application process, the person shows evidence that they have that quality of leadership. I think we do that when we ask people about affirmative action or, um, understanding of diversity. I think we need to do that when we're asking for our leaders who are applying, that they have the certain qualities that we determine are important for our leadership in this community.
Thank you, Commissioner Pillsbury. Anything else? Anyone else?
I'm sorry to miss the conversation. Is this about the process for, um, opening the search?
Yep, did you, and I gotta give you...
Is there, so is this the, um, are we just seeing this for the first time?
No.
Well, this is just a job description.
Yeah, this is what you received electronically, so...
So what's the, um...
Job description, city charter, um, search advisory team, procedure guidelines. Again, I had sent these electronically, so if anyone had any questions, um...
But these are just a compliance, this is mostly a compliance document. What I'm curious about is how will the search process be, um, you know, designed?
So we're meeting this Thursday to discuss that, and then we'll follow up with the board via email on, you know, input. And again, I look to Z and our HR director on that process.
So, um, can you just give me some more compass points around that? Like, you know, I get, I'm just curious about community engagement, you know? How will the board be involved? How will we choose a consultant? How will we determine the criteria? Like, can someone fill in the details?
Yes, I'm happy to start. So the details will be, you know, our standard procedures with HR, but looking at, you know, the budget that I included, are we going to, um, hire an outside search firm? What, what the, the search firm will offer and their guidelines and their compass points that would provide me with the insight, having never done this before. And then I look to, um, like I said, Z and HR to be able to give us those guiding questions that I go back to the board. Someone like yourself I'll rely on who's done the superintendent search before, and giving, you know, a collaborative effort in, in developing what those, those next steps are.
And so when are you looking for the board to make a decision by, about how we will conduct the search?
So I'm gonna look to the board, uh, the committee, that I think that it will be within the next week. We will, Z will advise us on potentially posting immediately the position and, and putting it up. But when we talk about, um, what was the question you asked, the criteria?
Well, okay, so you just gave me an indication that like you're thinking the position would be posted. But what I'm asking is, the board has not had a chance to discuss all of that.
Right.
It, it's a board decision. This is our greatest responsibility, other than being responsible for the assets of the district. I would like to request an open and transparent process where we have a discussion. I would not like to see the position posted next week. And I don't feel like this is the time of the discussion, because this isn't on the agenda. So when will this discussion be on the agenda? When will the board need to make a decision? How will we make that decision together? I hear you saying you'll bring information after meeting with Z about some options. Is that, am I guessing right? We'll have options recommended by staff. We can discuss those options and, and then have input into, and shaping them. And collectively come up with a process for the hiring? I mean, I guess I'm just now filling in the blanks.
I apologize for your frustration, Commissioner Curry. I'm doing my best job. I have our director of HR here. I look to her guidance, as having never done this before. So I appreciate it. I did put it on the agenda. We were waiting for the, uh, again, in respect to the su, the current superintendent and having this brought to the, the table yet, we were waiting for the, um, seven-day grace period before we started talking about this search from the release and the resignation of the superintendent. So now, as we sit here, this is why we, I did put it on the agenda. Uh, we added it to the agenda tonight. Uh, I sent the documents, and we will have this discussion tonight. As a board, we can talk about those parameters.
Okay, so this is the time for the...
This is the time we're gonna... This is the time we're going to discuss it.
Okay, I wasn't clear. I was just trying to figure out what was going on really.
No worries.
Sorry, because I'm sorry I left.
That's okay, that's okay. So in those, these initial steps, what we're doing tonight is, I gave you the documentation, and I would like Z to speak to what her leadership will provide, and then we'll fill in those questions for you so that there aren't of blanks.
I think Commissioner Curry missed the part, early on when she talked about establishing a search committee, you have two people who are going to be the chairs of that?
Yes.
They're meeting Thursday, that's what she, yeah, so that's what she's saying, that they're going to meet on Thursday and then start that process. Sorry to interject.
Thank you, okay. Thank you.
So thank you for this opportunity. I am looking to support the board in the search and our two chairs who have stepped up to help with this vacancy search. We're hoping, we're hoping for a very transparent and inclusive process. We do not want to have a closed-door process where there isn't community feedback. I think it's a crucial position for us to make sure that we find somebody that actually meets the demands of the school district for today and into the future. This is a great school district, and we need to have a champion. I think that there's a lot of things we have to ask. Thursday's meeting is the beginning of that conversation. We need to start with the job description, and that's for all our positions for the school district. We have to make certain that we're looking for the correct person and the skill set. So we'll have that conversation to make sure that we are starting down the correct path and we have a written job description to follow. Using a search firm for this community might be beneficial, and there are resources that I've given out to the board, and we'll be looking to make recommendations to look at some of those outside resources. They will help guide the board through the process. They will help guide me, and I would be a resource to them to make sure if they need something, that's made available to them. If they need community meeting space set up, I would work to make sure that that occurs. But they'll also help, some of these organizations will help the transition from candidate to finalist to when the person's actually selected, if we pick the right company. They will help integrate that new superintendent with the boards that you're working together on day one. And the community buy-in will also be, and community's voice and spirit should also be captured during that time. So today, we start the journey.
So, any other, any questions or not any other, are there questions around the job description or, you know, I guess I could also ask those board members who would like to follow up with the work of, you know, looking with Z at the job description. Are we, are we looking to, as a board, compile or, as you look at the current job description that was presented in 2015, similar to what Commissioner Pillsbury's concerns were in working on the job description as a board? We could pull it as a task force. Are there board members interested in looking at the job description over the next week?
I saw a 1999 date on one of them.
That was the V S B A. I had, I had then put the link in.
I think there might be some updates we could make.
So that was, I think it was V S B A.
Was it?
Yep.
I'd be happy to work on job description.
Okay. Great. Commissioner Curry, Commissioner Sowers, thank you.
I think it would be a good idea to just, if people have comments, they could take the time, you could read what you were given tonight, and then you could forward it on to, I mean, if Martine and I are going to be the co-chairs, we could compile it, send it out to all of you, see if you are in agreement with it, and then move from there.
Yeah, that sounds efficient.
All right. The budget is, you could go to page four of this document, the flipside, the superintendent search budget from 2015. Again, it's an overview. I remember the director of Lavery, as I said in the email, and we look at the costs associated and the actual. When we talk about a search form, and again, look to Z, when we compile three to four search firms, I imagine, we'll look to a budget similar to this, if everyone, I mean, this was a budget from four years ago that the board approved. Is there anything that anyone would like to comment about these line items or ask for clarification?
Do we have to do an RFP? Are we counting on it being over?
I spoke to Director Lavery, and he has indicated that this does not fall under the category that would be consistent to need an RFP. So we will not need to do that. But we will be asking for proposals from the companies that are identified so that we can make sure that we are being wise and we have our fiduciary responsibilities kind of checked off. And I would, I would not be surprised that we'll need a little bit more than what's currently being proposed, because this was from, what, 2015, and things cost a little bit more. And if we're going to do community involvement, potentially we might have to house one or two, or maybe even three finalists over several days. So our expenses could be greater there.
Commissioner Awal?
So when it says, the actual is what it really costs, like, three years and?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Director Lavery.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
They did not spend all of the money that they envisioned spending.
Okay.
So thirty-nine thousand was budgeted, twenty-three thousand was roughly spent, was the actual. Okay. So when we look at potentially serving a budget, that'll be the committee's work to estimate what Z had just spoke about, the costs that have gone up over the last four years. We would be looking anywhere from forty to fifty thousand dollars for this search.
We should know prior to or actually starting the search, the companies will give us, will give us budgetary guidelines and give us a typical expense, so we shouldn't be caught terribly off guard.
Okay, fine, great. Next, we went through the job description, went through that. Next is the, similar to what Commissioner Walts had asked about the search advisory team, procedure and guidelines. If we read through it, and anyone has any questions, feel free to reach out. I think we go to what Commissioner Walts had asked, the second page, how we would develop a search advisory committee composition. We would, and ask Z, are we looking for putting this out to our principals and administrators, our teachers and educators, those that are interested in participating and asking for, and I'm not sure how we did it in the past, asking for a letter of intent to participate?
I think we should probably, it's, I think it's good that we have stakeholders that are going to want to have a voice in the process. But I think we should probably wait until we figure out what we're doing with the, with maybe a hiring search firm, because they'll give recommendations to us. We do want to have as many people as possible involved, but we don't want it so unwieldy that we can't get to a census, consensus, excuse me.
Commissioner Curry?
Yeah, I mean, the last time around, that was, the process we used, that the, the search firms do this so much, and they're so used to whatever we throw at them, they will have seen it before. But that, I think it would be helpful to integrate like a Google survey or something, so that all teachers and staff can participate in kind of just identifying their characteristics or priorities and feel like, you know, they've been able to send that through a formal process.
That's good feedback, thank you. And I know you had said, based on some of the files or HR, do you, are we able to locate, or Commissioner Curry, are you able to provide insight to Z on who we used last time, the firm?
Yeah, I'm sure that's, you've probably come across it, right?
I don't know if you, if you haven't or if you have, but you-
I have not come across that.
I'm sure we can, I mean, we can see who we paid.
Yeah, exactly. I'm sure it's all there.
Oh, I'm sure.
If not, if not, it's call representative, Gina.
Yes. Okay. And then, anything else on this, no, that document, okay. And then, like I said, this was just a sample that Z had given us. And we are, the agency of education had offered their services and guidance, so that is who we are meeting or having a conference call with on Thursday, Secretary Dan French. And so we will report back sort of minutes from that meeting after we meet on Thursday. Anything else or any other questions?
Great, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for staying, for the money, Z. I appreciate that. Commissioner Wick, next on the agenda.
The party we've all been waiting for. Policy four dot seven, board self-governance. Does anybody need a hard coffee? I mean, I know it's late, I'm seeing, so we don't spend a lot of time. But if, I think it's important that we spend maybe at least five minutes possibly.
Aren't we supposed to post that?
No, it's already public. It's, it's, our, all of our policies are online. It would have been nice, but to attach it, that's all right.
All right.
Janie, thanks. We'll let Janie pass them out. All right, well, I'll get started here. So what's the point of this part of the evening? The point is, we're trying with our new board calendar to do a little self-reflection, and we are cycling through all of our policies over a given, over a given year. So this is self-reflection thoughts for four dot seven, governance investment. This is actually big and little at the same time, I think is very, very important. The governance essential to the achievement of districts' ends, and specifically, we're supposed to invest in our governance abilities. Number one, we'll allocate appropriate funds each year to ensure board skills, methods, and supports are sufficient to ensure excellent governing. Three examples, A, training to orient new members as well as continuing education. Number two, or B, outside monitoring assistance so that board has confidence in its control of district performance. Example given is a financial audit. We know we have that, but there may be other things we can think of here tonight. C, outreach mechanisms to be used to ensure the board's availability to listen to the community's viewpoints and values, sort of a community engagement thing. Do we need to budget for it? Do we not? We have a community engagement committee that's presently, you know, dormant, but that's all right. And then finally, the board will establish, it says here, a board budget for the next fiscal year during budget season. So that's, that's what's on the table before you. And I guess I'm just soliciting reflections, whether you think we've done a good job, or maybe more importantly, let's look forward with some ideas for the ensuing months. And any volunteers or, you can digest it, there's no obligation here to speak. You can have a quiet moment. Janie?
So did you, did you say that our policies are not online somewhere?
They are online.
Oh, okay.
I said they are, I'm sorry.
Can you, can that go into our notes from tonight?
You mean where they are online?
Exactly, like an actual link.
Yeah, it's really easy to find, though. If you go to our website and you-
I'm saying I want for them to be on board docs, for people in our community to be able to-
Link this particular policy.
No, our policies.
Like all of our policies.
Is it not a simple link?
Yeah, it is.
Okay, great.
So you mean attach it somewhere on board docs?
In the minutes of the meeting.
Well, put it in the minutes. Does that make sense? I'm sorry if I'm so slow, maybe it's just late and my brain is not functioning.
It's all of that.
The board governance policies are on the board's site. So you're asking for it to be recorded in minutes, that there's a link so people can go right directly to the site.
I wanted it to be easy for people to access these.
Right. This document you're looking at is not on the site, but the, but the four point seven doc, I'm just looking at it right now just to see, because there's some changes to it, right?
You mean it's not linked on board docs right now? This is freely available on our website, B S D V T.
Obviously not the revision, right.
They're all on?
Four point seven is on the board's site.
I, I am aware of that. I think it's just been hard for people to find it, basic information even, on the website.
Got it. So I think in our minutes-
Quick link in the minutes, I'm thinking that's not allowed to ask for.
No.
Considering what it might yield.
Yeah. So in other words, a line in the minutes at this point in the show that says, here's where you can find not only four dot seven, but here's where you can find all of our policies. Great idea.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Sowers?
Can we just take this and digest it and send you any comments? We have, this board self-reflection is good, but we're all tired.
Pretty sure.
And I wouldn't want it to get missed, because it's nice that we look back and see how we should do things better or what we want to change, but I think you might not think right.
Yes.
I agree, Kendra, but in, in, in depart, in leaving, in summation, I just want to say, I think we've done a lot to, you know, meet these, and I think it's a good policy. Now that we have committees, we have a real conduit for communicating with the public all the time. So I think that's done a lot to, to move this forward.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, seeing no other comment, we'll move to item ten, executive session. So, Commissioner Wick?
Yes, I'll just move over here, because I don't have it in front of me. Make a, I'll make a motion to consider executive session.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Under Title I, Ramon's statutes, three thirteen, A one, A, B, C, E, and F, because premature general public knowledge would put the district at a substantial disadvantage. And it regards discussing personnel matters with board's counsel and labor relations agreements with employees under one V S A, three thirteen, A three, to discuss, are we still doing?
Yes, yep.
Mid-year evaluation process of the superintendent and mid-year evaluation process of the interim principal of Arlington High School pursuant to our interim agreement with him.
Great.
Is there a second?
I have a second. Commissioner Gulick, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? All right, we'll move into executive.